We will now call this meeting to order at 12:32 PM. I will start with the rule call for the record. I am Chair Carmen Solson, and I am present. When I say your name, please indicate if you are present. Vice Chair Utz.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Present.
Board Member Herndon.
Present.
Board Member Johnson Davis.
Present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters?
So moved.
Board Member Herndon makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Utz seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay. Do I have a motion to exit executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters where no votes were taken?
So moved.
Board Member Utz makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Johnson Davis seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? We will now call this pre-work session to order at 2:45 PM. Thank you for joining us today for our Board of Education pre-work session. Our board meeting cadence allows for board members to prepare for upcoming regular board meetings through pre-work sessions. These work sessions, these sessions are typically more casual and are primarily for information gathering. No formal votes will be taken. We will begin our pre-work session with our book study, Modern Day Strategies for Community Engagement: How to Effectively Build Bridges Between People and the Bottom Line. All right. Each year, the school board selects a book to study that will assist us in living out the duties and responsibilities of school board governance. Today, Board Member Tracy Anderson will facilitate Chapter Four, How Do You Do Community Engagement?
Excuse me. I'm almost out of breath. It's really interesting that there, but I thought we could approach this since we are looking at professional development later in the meeting through the kind of lens that I've had with different professional development experiences. So, you know, for example, an NEH thing or an American Bar Association thing where effectively we have to end the professional development with an activity or something that we plan or could do. And so, one of the things that I really liked was this idea of the population-based definition of community. And I'm referring to, I guess it's the third, fifth page 51. So I think there are four described actions. And I like the idea that the community defines itself. And so, I thought that maybe we need to start with identifications of the various people in our community. At other times, I think we call them stakeholders. And I also like the idea of using what they describe as culturally competent evaluators so that when we are engaging with the community, we are actually not just talking to, not just hearing, and not just interacting with this group called the community, but we're ensuring that we've got as many different culturally competent individuals as possible. And then I'll share a few more things, but I would love for us to do one of those two things. If anyone else feels like there's something from the chapter, because here's the deal. It's called Modern Day Strategies, and I think of strategies as things that we do. And so, I feel like we're at a point in our book discussion. And I think, you know, we can agree, I believe I counted seven letters to Decaturish about CSDs at our last board meeting. I believe one was specifically about trust, and this chapter talks about establishing trust. But I think this is just a really great time for us to transition from just talking about some of the strategies to maybe identifying one or two that we could implement. I don't know how many went up too.
I definitely highlighted that as well. Employ culturally competent evaluators, so make sure some evaluators look like communities in question. If you all go back at page 50, another thing that I have added was cultural competence, which makes sure, makes sure that you're respectful and responsive to the health beliefs and practices as well as the cultural and linguistic needs of a diverse population group. So I think that means that we go back and incorporate feedback. That means that we have to make sure that it's not just the people that are coming to us, but that we're going to other people and making sure that the people that we're employing to reach out to those folks look like the folks that we're going to reach out to. So we can't send people that look like us or look like everybody else to, or people that we choose to go out into groups in the community. You have to define who those people are, and it's the people that look like them or that they appreciate to reach out to them. I think that also what we see a lot of in Decatur is that certain populations of people come to us, but we can't get necessarily anchored on the fact that that may be representative of the population as a whole. We have to do the work or understanding that there's multiple groups or subgroups, populations of groups that have different cultural practices, languages, needs. Define those populations, and then what this, what this book is saying is that we send people out that connect with those people directly. And it is true, you've had multiple letters to Decaturish. You've had a lot of social media outcry about one issue or the next, but it's on us to take that, tease it apart, and say, is that representative of the population as a, of a whole? Or is that one subgroup of a population that's reaching out to us? So we have to take that into context as well.
I think that it's, that it's also important to acknowledge when they talk about culturally relevant outreach, it's not just people that, that look like the people that you're reaching out to, but that the people who are doing the outreach have some sort of training or capability or knowledge or experience doing so, right? Like, like, just being a member of the community doing the outreach is necessary but not sufficient. Like, we, definitely the capabilities of the individuals that are reaching out is, is a critical consideration. Because you can take it sideways very, very quickly if somebody's overwhelmed in a meeting that doesn't have the skills to manage the group that they're in front of.
I was, I'm interested in story mapping as a strategy, as a tactic. But like every other place, Decatur has so much history, but it says we are seeing not everybody's history. You know, it can be so subjective. And so, I think particularly as we have the conversation about where the land sits, that, you know, we are looking to build the ECLC. How do we share the stories, you know, from this area? Who once lived on this land, like the residents of Beacon Hill? And then what can we do with that story? How can we incorporate that story in? So that would be a tactic that I was, I was interested in looking in more into.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, just to kind of circle back, I think what I read on page 51 is let the community define itself versus we decide. Now, obviously, if it is determined that the definition is clearly not reflecting Decatur, then we kind of look. But what I liked about this was opening it up. So I was thinking, and maybe I've brought this up before, because I saw it today on Church Street, where it's like little cars, I think about what you like about Decatur. And when I was running one day in Oakhurst, there were cars, I think, because I think the city have gotten really good at community engagement. And so, I, at times, have wondered if we could even borrow from them, because it shouldn't be that difficult. I mean, essentially, we're a small district, and we work with the city. We already have certain resources, so I totally understand why we want to be aware of listening to or defining one. But anyway, I just wanted to put that out there. And Jane, I love the idea of a story map, too. And I started wondering, like, what would that look like with each neighborhood and school area, what have you?
I did appreciate in there that it said that the community should be able to define themselves. Stakeholders should be able to define themselves. But it also says right there, cultural competence, which I think was kind of the crux of this chapter, making sure that leaders are able to connect and engage with all members of the community, is the ability to interact effectively with people of different cultures and help ensure that the needs of all community members are addressed. So it's, it's making sure that you take that feedback, that you, that you assess it, but also that you employ folks into the community that are able to reach and connect with all different stakeholder groups, regardless of whatever just comes to you, that you're able to put people out there that can connect with others. But it also says here, it can refer to such characteristics as age, gender, sexual orientation, disability, religion, income level, educational level, geographic location, or profession.
I would, I would say that when we're talking about, I wanted to go back to Board Member Anderson's comment around looking to the city a little bit. I do agree the city does this well. Or I think I, we can fairly say or acknowledge that they do it better than we do. But it's invested in, right? There, there are elements of their budget that spend the money specifically towards things like this. They have whole groups of community outreach, you know, organizations, right? And so, it doesn't happen in a vacuum. It actually is something that you have to choose to allocate budget towards. And, and I think that it is a fair community as we enter into this budget cycle, whether that's something that we want to talk about investing in, right? And whether that is something that the community feels we need to do better to the point where we would invest in it and that we think that we have a path to actually do it. It is beyond just the communications department. I should draw the distinction there, right? That this is more than just having communications, right? Community outreach is, is, I mean, there's, this entire book is talking about how it is a slightly different thing. And so, I'm open certainly to having that, that conversation.
And I guess I'd be interested to know what the city does differently than we do and really how, how we're measuring success for the city and for ourselves, right? To say that they do it better than us, I, you know, I'd be interested to know how we are measuring that.
I think, I, the city's received awards for, not that it's an award itself, but my understanding is I think other municipalities looked at Decatur City because of the way it's done this, but I may be misinformed there. And I, I agree, Hans, there may need to be a budget, but we have things like the Decatur Focus that already have a whole school section, some of those advisory boards. So I'd like to think there might be some easy ways to do this, although I understand that might be also requiring more time of us, besides just the line.
I wonder how with, in one part of our community, they have like all these different languages spoken. How accessible is Decatur Focus? Right? It's a great communication tool. I read mine every time it comes in the mail, but it's pretty and everything, but how accessible is it for, is it in Swahili? Is it in Somali? Yeah.
Acceptable for all.
Right.
I got to meet with a comp team last week, and it was really cool to see, like, their breadth of responsibilities, especially for a four-person team. They are really so involved in all of that outreach. A lot of different things, like one of the things we talked about was, you know, they cut out a really great newsletter, CC Weekly, every week. And, you know, I'm a student that neurotically checks my email, and I love looking at the newsletter, and I gain a lot from it. But I know a lot of other students aren't like that, and a lot of them are missing really key information. So we got to do some brainstorming on, you know, you're in a school environment, so you can make a kid do something, or you can't make a parent. So, you know, we were talking about integrating, like, you know, okay, kids, let's open up the newsletter and read it and see what's going on. And then that's a great way to get kids in that habit. And it becomes what, what that is a habit. And then, you know, we also got to talking about some strategies other districts use. So Board Member Utz, at this point, someone mentioned how a lot of boards have like a board liaison who sets up events and creates the calendar, not just as meetings, but like community events that Board Members can attend and things like that, like a direct servant of the board. You know, that, the viability of that here can be debated. But I think that that got me thinking a lot about not just how we're presenting ourselves as a board, but how we're presenting ourselves as individuals. You know, like, I want to be the leader that has business cards, and everyone has a business card with my name on it and knows they can contact me. I was really struck by the most recent elections in multiple ways. But on the local level, there were some candidates who were, like, who knocked my door and who had a really rich conversation with my mom that really impacted her. And even, you know, across the country, a lot of the elections that were won were won because of canvassing and because of ground games. So, you know, beyond professional communication and professional board meetings, I think something that I want to grow in personally is connecting one-on-one.
Can I ask, Student Rep Bautra, are you on Facebook?
No.
Is there, is there anyone that you know of your age that is on Facebook?
Not at all.
Yeah. So I also want to acknowledge in this book that there, it's a few years out of date, especially as it talks about social media, right? We live in an environment now where I think in, in our heads, meaning not student-age people, but our, the, the older folks on this board, we have a mental model of social media as it was in 2010 era. The community square, where you get together to communicate, to learn, and to grow. That it's fundamentally not what social media is anymore, hasn't been in about 10 years. Social media is the information equivalent of Doritos as a nutritional source. It is a biohacked algorithm designed to bypass our frontal lobe and activate our addiction cycles. Now, this is not the case that everyone uses it this way, but we have to understand. Somebody, somebody has recently told me, social media is just a tool. A hammer is a tool. You can use it to drive a nail. You could also use it to stave someone's head in, but it is neutral. Social media is not. It is specifically designed to create that outrage cycle. And I, I actually haven't seen a successful example since the pandemic of social media being used well to bring a community along in terms of communications. I really haven't. I mean, look at, look at, we, we all know the CDC, right? We're all familiar with the CDC. One of the most well-funded organizations for health in the globe with whole teams of communication professionals specifically dedicated towards communicating in the social media sphere, got destroyed during the pandemic. Absolutely destroyed during the pandemic and, and effectively failed in terms of communicating and winning in that space. And so, I think it is important for us to acknowledge, and I don't have an answer here. I really, I really don't have an answer here. I'm raising a problem without providing a solution, and I hate doing that, but I don't have an answer here. We, we do, I think, have to recognize that there is a series of corporate bad actors who have found a profit model that driving outrage and division maximizes their income to that environment. That doesn't mean we ignore it and run away from it, but it does mean, I think, we have to acknowledge that that is an environment that we're operating in and that our strategy should reflect that. You know, our kids get it. They get it. They're not on Facebook. It's where old people go to yell at each other. And, and so, I did really like what you said, Rep Bautra, about canvassing, knocking on doors, sitting down one-on-one. That human connection is, I think, where effective outreach and communication can happen in a way that I don't think the algorithms permit us to in a social media environment.
I don't know what to say.
Anything else?
No.
Any other comments? All right. Okay. Thank you, Board Members, for your engagement. Next month, we will not engage in the book study. However, we will pick backup in February. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next item. Thank you, Chair Solson. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to present Policy DJE for discussion.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Dr. Solson, Vice Chair Utz, the team members of the board, Student Representative Bautra, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Today, we have one policy on the agenda for pre-work. As a reminder to the public, policies that are presented during pre-work are new business on which we are seeking board input. These are forward feedback that can be reflected in drafting or revising future versions. Policy being presented for discussion today is Policy DJE, Purchasing. This is an existing policy that was originally adopted in October of 2022. Because its last review date is also October 2022, it was one of numerous policies identified earlier this year as a policy for the board to review this year. Policies that are up for review are being considered for any needed updates or revisions, but it is also possible they may not require changes. DJE was identified for review in pre-work this month because it is cross-referenced in Policy FDB, Long Range Needs Determination, which was presented for first read last month. A copy of Policy DJE has been provided to the board, and it is also attached to the Assembly Agenda item and available in the policy manual online on Assembly. It provides guidelines related to purchasing. It states that generally, a competitive process should be followed, and it allows for price, performance, convenience, or other factors to be considered when more advantageous to the district. The policy authorizes the superintendent or designate to approve purchases or contracts under $100,000 for budgeted items and under $50,000 for change orders. Board approval is required for purchases, contracts, or change orders over these amounts. As an example of this policy in action, we can consider the new Early Learning Center. For the new ECLC, a request for qualifications or RSQ process was used to qualify and select vendors for the ECLC services. The RSQ process helps ensure that vendors are qualified when the specific process is known. In this case, an ECL building that not only serves our youngest owners, but also provides space for high school students and the early childhood pathway to gain valuable experience, all of which is aligned with our charter innovation. Because the amount was over the $100,000 threshold per policy, the top three qualified vendors were brought to the board for approval during the November 2024 regular meeting. At this time, I welcome board input on any revisions, considerations, or recommendations for Policy DJE. Board, you have been provided with a copy of this policy as well as an environmental scan of Policy DJE from other Georgia school districts. Dr. Lomita Broom, Chief Financial Officer, has joined me to provide any needed subject matter expertise. We will use your feedback to bring forth revisions, if needed, for first read in work session next month.
First thing I observed, and please, Simon, if any of you see something different. So a district like Fulton, which had much more written in its policy, like us, has the 100,000 threshold, right? On the other hand, and then Fulton has 108 schools. And then DeKalb looks more like a novel, and it was really difficult for me to get through all that. But this is probably not science, but I look at Marietta, and I believe 15,000 is the threshold. I looked up the Uf図 because I wanted to see more comparably sized districts. And I think Uf図, so again, that's on their paperwork, is 30K. So basically, anything over 30K to 99K that's not in the budget is board approved. So my first instinct is to say we need to lower that amount to be on par with smaller districts, but that's just my quick assessment of big districts versus Decatur.
Good, James. I guess I'm far more interested in how do we make sure that, that the purchasing is being done properly? I mean, it's topical for me for the news and the DeKalb CEO. I can say that amount, right? Like, well, what's the accusations and stuff like that? So 100,000, 50,000, I don't have a strong point, but like, who watches? There's nothing in here that says that, like, who's reviewing these purchases? Who's making sure that the car, like, I, like, we didn't approve the cars being purchased. Well, the cars were up for rent, they're part of the budget, they just got it done. So that's my first set of questions, is like, should we put in policy? Who's watching? Who's watching now? Who's making sure that bids are going out properly, legally, and ethically?
Well, me. So any purchase, purchasing is centralized. So every purchase is entered into the financial system, and it comes to my office. So I make sure it has the support and documentation. And if it's over 100,000, they have to, they have to attach board approval, documentation of board approval. Plus, all solicitations come through my office. Additionally, if it's over $5,000, it goes to the superintendent for approval.
Over 5,000?
Over 5,000.
Yeah. So I have to approve all purchase orders that are over 5,000. So I guess the question is, to James's point, should that be written out here? Because some of the other school districts do have that language explicitly stated, including all the way down to the principal. $1,000 or less at the school level can be signed off by the principal. If it's, you know, 101 up to 2,000, it requires a second signature. It's your finance, the principal plus you. So I guess the question is, do board members feel like that language needs to go? Is that level explicit?
We have, because we wrote the $4,999,999, only one focus required. Anything over 5,000 required, two goals are, both of those are. Anything over 5,000 required. Two quotes are, those words are, have to be. Those are regulations. Correct. That's what we call them, right?
Yes. And when looking on assembly, it's not a regulation as far as R1 or what have you. That is the process that we made. You know, that was one of the first things I did was to make sure that we had that entire process clean for when you have to do bids. So whether or not, when you're bringing someone on, that you are actually procuring, you are giving them the contract, you need to make sure you have, depending upon the window or that limit that Dr. Broom just specified, you have to make sure you have enough quotes, whether it's sealed, whether it's RFP, whether it's RFQ, or if it's not sealed and you just have to get.
Also not attached, I'm jacked at that.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was saying, I was just affirming what she just said.
So in effect, there are, so the cab, the cab is in policy trying to solve some historical issues that day of fact. So I think that level of hyper specificity is probably not appropriate. And it largely sounds like some of y'all agree. But I do actually like Marietta bringing up a level of what we currently have at a regulation level in specific to policy. In general, if you can handle it in regulation, I'm indexed towards putting it into regulation. But purchasing, this is an area where large organizations get in trouble so often that I think it warrants bringing some of that regulation up into a policy level. And I think I like Marietta's format. Now, I think the limits in Marietta are pretty bitty-bitty for the size of their budget. So I don't necessarily agree with 15,000, but I'm willing to have a conversation about whether 100 is right. Like, we can figure that out.
Well, I have a question here, then, because I think now, similar to James's, what is the rationale for the amount? So I go back to Fulton, and I look it up. I'm like, okay, it's 108 schools, and I'm a friend who, you know, described it as like there's an emergency plumbing issue. Obviously, you know, the more schools you have, right, as one example, the more issues you're going to have. But we have fewer schools. So I guess I would like to know then a little bit more about, you know, this purchasing policy exists in various school districts. And we see that there's wide variety of capping amount, right, from 15,000 to 100,000. So help me understand why a small school district needs 100,000 or... I just want to understand more of what's the rationale for the 100,000 versus the 50,000? Like, what are the items that would typically be used for this that then justify why it needs to be 15, 30, 50, 100?
Maybe that's the kind of piece of data that we're missing. How often, at each level of expense, are we authorizing things that don't come before the board? And what are those things typically for, right? And so if 95% of the purchases are all happening at a $15,000 level, then maybe that is a fine threshold. As long as there's a call out for emergency spend when, you know, a plumbing system blows out a clear month, right? So I think without having kind of the information on what is typically happening and how this is typically exercised, I think it's hard for us to say definitively this is the right threshold versus this.
And that's a question, Board Member Anderson. Your, what is your rationale behind Laura?
You know, honestly, when I looked at them, it was, yeah, DeKalb clearly seems to be doing something else by the enumerated actions, but it was largely just looking at the smaller districts. So I think Bib County, am I wrong? They don't even allow anything, but I may have been spread that one. Because I think we had Bib in there. Marietta is the one closest in size to us. And then I just looked up Buford this morning because it's smaller. Because I just think Fulton and DeKalb aren't really comparable in many regards.
I'm just wondering, what does it mean for us? Like, what is it? Are we doing... Are the districts our size or?
I mean, I would think we're doing it just to be physically responsible. You know, obviously, we have to review the policies up for review. I think, like James said, you know, DeKalb is certainly an anomalous situation right now, given the situation. But it's not the only school district, and it's not the only school district with a board, you know, that belongs to GSBA that's dealing with financial things. So I don't see why we wouldn't want to at least discuss the rationale for the amount of money that we're capping for the purchase order.
One thing that draws your attention with Marietta specifically, because I did notice this enough at the top it has when they both originally adopted it and its last review, it's an old policy for Marietta. It's 2010. It might be that it's still working for them, right? But I do want to draw your attention to the fact that that is 15 years old as well at this point, since they have reviewed it. So obviously, economics have changed too.
That would be my follow-up question, was going to be, was there any guidance from GSBA as to, if they had any guidance to, based on size of district or anything like that, what the cap should be before a purchase goes before the board for approval versus being signed up by the superintendent?
And I would say, more than likely, because you adopted this policy in '22, this was the years when you all literally built the manuals.
Yeah, right. We were cutting, yeah, we needed this because we didn't have any policy in place. I do want to partially address Dr. Johnson Davis's question around why you would look at different levels. It is very clearly linked to budget size, right, the threshold amounts. Because it might be in DeKalb or APS, the budget for paper is $100,000. And that doesn't necessarily need to go in front of the board, like, that's a consistent... Whereas if we're spending $100,000 on paper, there is a giant problem, yes. And so your routine purchases, of which there are literally tens of thousands, routine purchases, are going to be highly linked to the budget, and you don't necessarily want us approving 10,000 purchases a year, right? So you can say that there is some linkage to the size of the district. And so that becomes a question. I think going to GSBA, looking for some guidance there, kind of understanding, is it a percent of budget? Is it a percent of spend? What's the, how do we think about what those right thresholds are that would be appropriate? What we don't want is to find ourselves in a situation where we're approving purchases of pencils and stuff like that, right? Like, this is meant to be larger ticket items that come in front of them.
I think my other thought was, this, a couple of these policies had language about P cards in there. I think we have a list of policy for that. Is it worth it to put P cards in this purchasing policy or leave them separate as though?
No, leave it separate. So as I am looking at various districts and what they have in assembly, some have just DJE, some have DJEA, which is purchasing authority. Some have purchased cards with the P cards, and that is completely, which is DJEAC, purchasing guidelines, purchasing for vendors. Like, everyone has different codes. You can take it as more distinctly or disparately, or you can put it together. So we approved purchasing cards authority last year, but everyone is... And I think it's just the way policy manuals have grown over the years from originally DJE is the basics, that's what you must have. And then you build on them based upon what the need are requiring.
And I have seen policies where the board approves a certain dollar amount for the form of food and non-consummable. That way, it's what you approve.
Yeah. So my reading of Bib is they don't have to approve anything, for the record.
See, I read it. It says, "All requests for not provided will require prior approval for both boards."
No, no, no. Read the next three letters. Send it forward.
I'm sorry. Whichever is appropriate?
No, you stop the board, and then it clearly says, "or the superintendent."
Ah, okay. Yeah, there you went.
I literally think that county is just operating where the superintendent says, "Okay," they can buy it.
All requests for...
Yeah, let's not do that.
So it's one of the, well, okay.
So they didn't have to say and/or.
Yeah, no. So you're right.
So can we, yeah.
There were questions about the $100,000 cap in the statute statutory, where about $100,000 cap comes from. So it's certainly not uncommon for schools to adopt this statutory cap. There are certainly some that stop it.
Lord.
Okay. That's why a lot of them are $100,000. It would not be permissible for, it'd be more than $100,000 if you could adopt something less.
Thank you.
I'd like to start with some, just finding out some examples of some other places and where it's working, and do they have a full-time board and that sort of stuff? All the other ones also had a line for emergency expenditures that we don't have in ours. I would hate if someone used the plumbing example or air conditioner or sewage. I would hate for the superintendent to get in trouble because they spent, that's a big dollar amount.
Apparently, if we have an emergency, you know, $100,000 or more, we'll bring it to the next board.
If there's a sewage spill that requires $100,000 at a school, they're going to start the cleanup of it.
Sure. Yeah. That would come through the commission first.
Okay. And then I have a question about the difference. So there's language in here that the superintendent and others have to... You know, when we tell them to spend money, they have to get bids and requests for proposals. But if there's just a general discussion about what something will cost, there's a difference there. There's no expectation that if the board, or three members of the board, or even one says, "Hey, what would it cost to do this?" Superintendent doesn't have to put that up there. Or should there be language about that? Maybe Dr. Whitaker can talk about how that can happen. Very plainly, an example would be like, "Hey, what would it cost to retrofit this school?" It's not a bid to retrofit the school, so we wouldn't open that up for people to do it. We're just sort of gathering data.
Correct.
Should we, is that okay? What does the rest of the board members think?
If they're, like, for example, you might, I know, over 100,000 until you serve the marketing.
If you want to proceed.
Correct, if you want to proceed.
Yeah, I think putting the collection of estimates probably does not rise to a level of a policy. I feel like that's getting into the weeds. I feel like that can function more at a regulatory level, a regulation level. Obviously, if those estimates come back and exceed any of our thresholds, wherever they end up, then obviously, this would trigger the policy. But I don't know that I'd want to get, as it starts to look like DeKalb County.
As a sidebar, the thing that came to mind was when Mr. Adams showed us the weight room, right? And they did some work in that. No one on the board thinks that he should have to come to, he should have to put out there to get estimates to redo the weight room because it might be a $100,000 job beforehand, correct?
No, I don't. I actually kind of like how Marietta has included different threshold purchasing limits and rules required. It sounds like we have a similar thing. I think that should actually be called out in policy. I don't think we need to specify how to go get estimates. I just that if your estimates exceed these thresholds, you need to have done these processes.
I agree. There just seems to have been a people like, "Oh, you got to get quotes for estimates," but then that raises... I can see a whole lot of estimates that may or may not be at the $100,000 mark, but we won't know until we get bids.
Yeah, I understand.
So I think when you think about, and you brought it up. It, we were at a community meeting, and it was asked, "How much would it cost to retrofit Westchester?" And that was not necessarily, "We are seeking to go retrofit Westchester, therefore, we have to go through RP." No, it was, "What's an estimate? Could you do the exercise to let me know how much would that cost?" And so that's an estimate. It's like when, you know, you're, it's an estimate. It's not procurement. It's not solicitation. Those are what would be defined words in procurement law and statute, as well as policy, and that it happens at Godot in the way in which we must procure information. Estimates do not fall in there. Not thinking that, that's...
Got it. Got it.
That's a different question, and I'm not sure if it can be answered. But one thing I was wondering as well, and I think maybe, Hans, you kind of asked this, with like, well, what does this look like? How are we doing it? What are the budget buckets from which these purchases come? I mean, they can be anywhere in the budget, like, you know, people services or staff training or... Because it's under that threshold, is that right?
What?
No, not your question. I'm just asking in general, you know, we have a budget, right? And each budget category, like instruction, people services, staff training, et cetera, has an amount. So when there is a purchase under this policy that falls under 100,000, it can be from anywhere in the budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right. Well, but hold above 5,000, it has to be approved by Dr. Broom.
But it could come from any other function category.
But, okay, wait. So I heard the question slightly differently, and I just want to make sure we're clear on it. What you can't do is if I need to purchase something, let's say I'm in instruction, and I need to purchase something, and I might not have the budget for it, I can't just say, "Okay, well, I'm going to go use some other budget function to afford this particular thing," right?
It's a budget adjustment.
That comes in front of us, though. When you start talking about budget adjustments, you can... So that is why we need lower thresholds. In a million-dollar, or in a $100 million budget, we should not be reallocating $999,000 in a budget without us having a comp. That makes me uncomfortable.
Basically, it's...
99...
If it's approved, and you've got 50,000, you cannot move that. Like, if you're purchasing something from people services, you cannot move it. That's what you want.
What I am saying is that for some of these upper threshold numbers, it should come back in front of us. Correct?
Yeah, because if it's an amount that high, when we go to reconcile the budget at the end of the year, and we're planning next year's budget, we're going to be, we're going to, then we might be confused as to how much we actually budgeted for versus actually how much we actually spent. If an amount that large just got moved around, you know, if it was 1,000 or something, then that's different. But if you're talking somewhere upwards of 100,000, then that could give us a, that could paint a different picture of how much we budgeted for versus amount actually spent. So I can see the point.
So you want that language included in here in terms of...
No, just, we, I don't know that 15,000 is right. That feels very low, frankly. But whatever the number is, it should be probably under 100,000, right? 100,000 is what you're dealing with at APS or Fulton County or DeKalb. So whatever that recommended dollar amount is at those lower thresholds, that's why, I think. Just because you're talking about percentage swings in the budget that aren't coming out of the function codes that we were recently budgeting them for.
But to answer your question directly, Board Member Johnson Davis, he's addressing the amount whereby they would have to come back to us for board member approval. So Board Member Anderson was saying, should it be 15,000? Should it be 50,000? And then Jill said, the statute says it...
10,000, but it can't, it get lower.
But his argument was that's the reason why, amount that large, one of these reasons is the reason why amounts this large should come to us.
Okay. But just in terms of potentially moving from one bucket to another, are we putting, are we putting any, you know?
No, no, no.
I wish to hear about that, or?
There is value in having the flexibility, because you can't perfectly forecast the budget. So having that flexibility is okay. I am saying, though, in a budget our size, $100,000 isn't a lot of money to move around in a budget without it coming back.
But the purchase would come before us if it's 100,000.
Okay, regardless.
900, well, when the budget gets fixed and it gets moved in categories, that's all she was saying. It would still get approved just because it was moved around.
But I've heard that, I've heard it...
The threshold doesn't...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I heard that, I heard the argument as to her point. If you make the threshold like 50,000, then you could have some 50,000s here and there. That could impact what your budget looks like at the end of the year, you know?
Yeah. I think for me, one, I was just trying to get the information. And so then, I think what I landed on, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that effectively, any purchases under 100,000 take place, right? When it hits 5,000, then the superintendent approves. When it hits five thousand, then the superintendent approves it, but we don't know. And then the second thing I heard is that, yes, under the existing practice, any purchase under a hundred thousand, twenty-five K here, sixteen K here, nine thousand K here, can go from any of those budget bu- buckets. And so it sounds like then there are two things we're trying to address. What the cap amount is that can take place without authority, and then the understanding of the. It category or bucket, and the ending, is that right? And so Hans, I understood you to be saying that, yes, we are now capping this at some rate. There would be less, um, change in that budget bucket or category by the end of the year, or that's just like.
There may still be the same amount of change, but it would have come in front of us.
Okay.
And, and I, I do think in rereading our policy, it does say a hundred thousand or less for budgeted items. So presumably those are, yeah, it's really the fifty thousand dollar change orders. But nonetheless, let's do, I think, what the board is basically agreeing on, is get a scan of what the right thresholds are and make some recommendations there.
Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mrs. Lynch. I look forward to discussing this policy at first read at next, uh, month's board meeting, that, board meeting, there being no further business. The pre-work session is adjourned at three thirty-two P M. We will go right into our work session. I will now call this work session to order at three thirty-two P M. Thank you for joining us today at our monthly work session. Work sessions are designed for in-depth discussion, study, and planning regarding district policies, issues, and upcoming decisions. Many items presented in a work session inform future board making agenda items, including consent agenda. Uh, Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the first presentation.
Thank you, Chair Sultan. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to present the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight draft academic calendar.
Good afternoon once again, board members and Superintendent Whitaker. Today, I'm excited to share with you information surrounding the development of the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight academic calendar, and ask for your feedback on a draft calendar as we move towards adoption. The development of the academic calendar aligns with our strategic accelerator focused on organizational effectiveness and excellence. In addition, the parameters that go into developing the calendar also support our other strategic accelerators. For example, allowing teacher professional learning days supports our strategic accelerator cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals, while planning for one hundred and eighty days of instruction supports student success in all areas. Today, we are sharing a draft proposal for the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight academic calendar. The academic calendar for next year, the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year, was approved by the Board of Education in December of twenty-twenty-four. To remind the public, we look to adopt academic calendars annually and approximately a year and a half prior to implementation, so that our families and staff have access to them early. The twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight academic calendar that is being presented as a draft today is quite similar to the calendar that was adapted last year or next year. The draft was created based on district priorities, as well as data we have gathered over the past several years in our calendar development process from stakeholders and our teacher advisory council. Our theme includes striving for one hundred and eighty instructional days for students. As a charter system, we are able to waive this number of instructional days to align with the state of Georgia's requirement that public schools provide one hundred and eighty days of instruction per school year. We also desire to distribute these school days as evenly as possible between the two semesters. Priorities include the fall and winter break, which has been part of the C S D fabric and is valued by students, families, and staff alike. Staff professional learning opportunities, and alignment to other metro area calendars where possible. This priority is important for our staff who may not live in the city of Decatur and whose own children may not attend C S D schools. In addition to district priorities, we also consider stakeholder feedback from surveys administered over the past two years. In twenty-twenty-three, we heard from nearly two thousand respondents, and in twenty-twenty-four, we had nearly six hundred respondents. Results from these surveys consistently show a strong preference for the week-long breaks in September and February, ending before Memorial Day and starting on or after August first. Based on survey data, our current academic calendars also reflect a reduction in the number of early release days from previous years, in which were maintained in the calendar that we adopted for next year. Finally, in drafting academic calendars, we also consider feedback from advisory councils. Last year, the Teacher Advisory Council expressed a strong desire for an additional teacher workday during the academic year, as well as a strong desire to maintain the digital learning day on Election Day. The proposal for an additional teacher workday was supported across stakeholder groups in last year's survey and is reflected in next year's calendar on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-six. Together, the considerations I just highlighted inform the drafting and adoption of next year's twenty-sixth. Next year's calendar includes a full one hundred and eighty days of instruction for students. You can see the addition of the teacher workday in October, the continued reduced number of early dismissal days, and new early dismissal days on the last day of each semester. The twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh calendar provided the starting point for developing the draft of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar, which you can see here. I'm excited to again report that the days have fallen overall in our favor for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. You may notice, it's a leap year, which also helps. This draft includes the following features. It is very similar to the board adopted twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh academic calendar. Has a hundred and eighty school days, where semester one has eighty-eight days and semester two has ninety-two days. Monday, August second is proposed as the first day of school, and Thursday, May twenty-seventh is proposed as the last day of school, which is before the Memorial Day holiday. The break schedule is similar to what we have done historically with full week breaks in September for fall break, November for Thanksgiving break, February for winter break, and April for spring break, and a semester break that is just over two weeks long for students. The teacher workday in October that will launch next year is again included, based on last year's teacher feedback and community support through the survey. A copy of the draft calendar is attached to this agenda item in December. So what's our timeline? Today, I presented draft one of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight students academic calendar, and in just a moment, I will invite any board feedback. Next week, we will open a survey for stakeholders to provide any feedback on and responses to this draft. This survey will remain open through the Thanksgiving break. We value a collaborative approach to calendar development and will actively seek additional feedback, especially from our teacher advisory council later this week, and we anticipate bringing the final proposed calendar to the board in December for our approval. Finally, once the final calendar is adopted, I want to point out that we will again develop a calendar companion. It was initially rolled out several years ago. The calendar companion is created in partnership with the Superintendent's Interface Council. It is a resource that identifies major religious holidays for different faiths and considerations that should be given to students and staff of that faith. For example, considerations might include the likelihood of absences or observers participating in fasting or prayer during the school day. The companion is provided to school and district leaders as an awareness resource that should also be used when scheduling district and school events. So at this time, I welcome any board discussion or input to be considered for the draft twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight academic calendar or the calendar of adoption.
Just wanted to clarify, there are no early release days in this calendar?
There are early release days. We went, so in the current year, it reflects the community's, um, input to do a reduction. So we used to have one every single month. This year is the first year where we cut some of those, so they're not every month anymore, and we've carried that on in the calendars that you adopted for next year and in this proposed one.
Are they listed on there?
They are, they're in yellow, so those yellow dates are those, um, proposed early release dates, which you'll see also at the end of the semester, the half-yellow, half-green shows that it's the end of a semester and an early release date.
I appreciate the, um, workday, and I, I do have to speak as a high school teacher here. I think they need another one. Um, I would like to know what the early release days are used for, because I see that the priority is professional learning. So, um, I see that the workday, it appears was brought back or is new. Is that correct, based on stakeholder feedback from twenty-twenty-four? That's great. Uh, but what are the early release days? Is that for the professional development?
Typically, early release days are used for professional learning and professional development for teachers. Um, the feedback that we received from the teacher advisory council to bring back that full day looks a little different at different grade bands. So our elementary teachers were looking for time to meet with parent conferences and have time to meet with parents and things like that. Um, again, sometimes it's, it's, um, you know, there's a little bit more discretion there at how it's used at the school level and things like that for teachers putting in grades. You know, it's, it coincides well with, you know, typically kind of that mid-semester.
So I think, you know, what I was thinking about, and again, filling any of my wrong gaps here, um, I believe we adopted that new grading policy that has retakes. So that sounds like more work for teachers, at least at the high school level. I don't know about the middle school. Um, additionally, I think the board looked at a change in kind of allotments, and so that tool for success or win time, I believe, is an additional. And so that alone says to me, I would like to see another workday or understand the work time there for teachers when possible. Um, and then I guess the other part is the same things that teachers have to do in the fall, grading in particular, um, because I do know that, you know, there's a lot of useful data from things like the STAR test, um, benchmarks. But in my experience, uh, parents and kids want to know about the grades. So my recommendation is, um, another workday. I looked up for outside county, um, I think that was what we looked up for the school board rep, and I believe they have two workdays.
So, um, thank you for that. I did bring this to P T O just this morning, and there was a trepidation of just the having an early release day and a. And a workday both in October. Um, and I see a nod of a head from a parent who was there in the meeting with me earlier today, and I did explain exactly what we said just a moment ago, which are every grade band looks at it differently. So from a high school perspective, yes, they're pretty angry, but from elementary perspective, they're conferencing with parents. But neither one of them, on that teacher workday, have addressed the professional learning needed so that we don't have to bring in subs to try to do professional learning and at a time when really instruction should be happening. So, um, I will say that that was what the P T O, P T A advisory council, uh, brought to the, my attention about this calendar.
Um, another thing to consider is if we were to add an additional teacher workday, say, in the spring, then we start running into some of the priorities that have come out through the surveys before. So if the goal is to continue to try to maintain one hundred and eighty days of instruction, you're now looking at pushing back. And so it, it has kind of that domino effect. We have to find, where can we find that day to then serve students in addition? So you would look at maybe starting school on Friday, July thirtieth, for example, or, which I know, I'm not actually recommending that, I know better.
There are people with heads shaking behind this.
I can, I can feel the, the, the stairs. Um, so we would have to be able to kind of negotiate where that would go or recognize that we would then have to exercise some of our flexibility and waiver on the number of school days, which, um, you know, we've had discussions before about prioritizing that.
So maybe then my question may be less relevant to the calendar, since the calendar appears to be for the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the high schools. There's a kind of one size fits all. And perhaps later, when we're looking at it, like in terms of then what makes the teacher work day each day, um, in terms of what, you know, students need in particular? You know, I guess I'm thinking that we have some teachers who aren't classroom teachers, I believe, like academic coaches, those student support physicians, and I think they work two hundred and ten days instead of one ninety, right? So there must have been some determination of whatever work they needed for those extra days. So maybe my question is not as much for the calendar, if the workday can't be included and for a later question about the, the process to determine the time. Thank you.
I, so, um, I was particularly excited to hear about the, I forget the term that you used, it, the supplementary calendar, informational calendar. Calendar companion for, um, teachers and administrators to know when religious events are occurring and things of that nature. I'd love to see that published along with the calendar, just for the public at large, right? Because I think, I think there's probably a lack of awareness of how much is necessary to be sensitive to and work around. And, and, and that's a value, I think, that we have as a community to commit to that. Um, we should publish that along with the calendar for the community.
And, and I will say that we do, um, provide this calendar draft a year and a half ahead of time, but the interface council is not a year and a half ahead. So we're, we publish this, this earlier and get this feedback, so families are able to plan for lives, if you will. But the, so that convenes brings, uh, that companion a year ahead of time, not necessarily a year and a half.
We're scheduled to meet with the interface council in December, and during that time, we'll look at the calendar that is adopted for next school year to line up all the dates of the faith in the same kind of format. Every year, making sure the dates are right. We have the people from the faith check the dates, confirm the dates, and confirm, kind of there's, um, you know, just because you kind of asked. Um, there's like different concepts of, you know, yes, a student or staff or observer might be fasting this day, so be aware. Or they might be absent, it's likely that many in this faith might be absent this day. Um, so they check all of that. So, yeah, we can absolutely make that publicly available.
Great, thank you.
Um, I have just one quick question. Um, based on this draft, will students across the whole district still be off for Election Day? Um, we've gotten quite a bit of. Back on that being a whole learning day versus should they just have a whole day off? Um, and if they are gonna have that thing for about it being a whole virtual day, can you explain the rationale as to why it is set up that way?
Sure, so this does have that same carry through. So it would be counted as a school day. It would be a digital learning day, meaning students stay at home and do not report to school. Um, if, it was not a digital learning day, it would not count as a school day if they were home, so we would be less than our one eighty. Um, the digital learning day has kind of multiple purposes. Um, one is, we've all lived, lived COVID. Um, there's a little bit of, of exercising the digital muscle, um, and understanding that. It is also something overwhelmingly in staff feedback, um, that they appreciate having. Um, we are a community that values civic engagement. Um, it gives them time to also go vote, um, on Election Day as well. Um, and so for those reasons or reasons why it, it is kind of continued on the calendar year over year.
So just to level that with the community and with parents, it will continue on for multiple calendar years, um, but it needs to be considered a virtual day so that it counts as a full, a full school day. Otherwise, we're gonna be below the one eighty threshold.
We have adopted it for next year, and it is on this proposed draft, correct? Thank you.
So leap year is our friend. Uh, we will start after August first and end by Memorial Day, and I will continue to engage the superintendent advisory councils, just as I did this morning with the P T O.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynch. Community, please take a moment to participate in the survey. We look forward to learning the results at the December board meeting in anticipation of a recommendation. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next item.
Thank you, Chair Sultan. I would like to call on Mrs. Karen Newton Scott, Deputy Superintendent, to provide an update on high-quality professional learning, our capacity-building structure.
Good evening, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, Vice Chair Utz, members of the board, Student Representative Fatra, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. This evening, this afternoon, I'm excited to share the story of how City School of Decatur is transforming professional learning into a coherent, data-driven system that supports every educator and ultimately every student. Our story begins with a challenge, a challenge to cultivate and retain high-quality professionals. One powerful way to meet that challenge is by providing, providing professional learning that is both timely and purposeful. We recognize that our approach to professional learning has become unstructured and inconsistent, resulting in uneven quality and limited impact across schools. So our theory of action is simple. If we design and implement a professional learning system that elevates standards, structures, and processes, making professional learning data-driven, self-embedded, and of high quality, then our staff will be equipped to ensure student growth and equitable outcomes for all learners. So we set out to level up professional learning with a four-year initiative focused on enhancing the conditions, content, and processes that make professional learning impactful across C S D. The four foundational factors that ground our professional learning system begins with our strategic plan accelerators, which keep the work aligned to our district priorities. Next. Next, equity-mindedness ensures that every action we take supports fairness, inclusion, and opportunity for all. In addition to the learning forward standard, I'm sorry, in addition, the learning forward standard defines what high-quality professional learning looks like, sustained, collaborative, and results-focused. And finally, the ESF definition, the Every Student's Speech Act, reminds us that professional learning must be ongoing and directly connected to classroom practice. Together, these elements create a strong and coherent foundation for our system. One example of this work is our new mentor and new teacher program, which includes one-to-one mentoring, school-based coordinators, and teachers first to two to three years. It's job embedded, feedback-driven, and responsive to the needs of new educators, exactly the kind of structured supportive learning experience PL was designed to provide. Now let's look at what the data tells us. Since August, we have had over 655 unique participants engaging in 56-plus professional learning sessions across the district. Teachers made up the vast majority of the participants and 99% reported being fully engaged at least 75% of the time. We evaluate our PL sessions across five domains, knowledge, skills, attitudes, aspirations, and behaviors, using our thumbs up scale, where three or more thumbs up represents a strong outcome. Across all domains, our average scores range from 3.5 to 3.77, or roughly 87 to 94% positive feedback. That means our staff not only learned new content, but believed it was relevant, felt confident applying it, and plan to use it in practice. In short, our professional learning is producing transfer of learning, which is the ultimate measure of impact. These results indicate that we are transitioning from compliance-based training to transformational professional learning. By aligning our systems to learning forward standards and ESF criteria, we're ensuring that our PL content is rigorous, our processes are intentional, and our conditions for success are in place. Looking ahead, our next steps include everything listed here as well as activating the professional learning management system within our existing frontline platform, which is a comprehensive suite of tools to manage administration, human capital, and student information. This new feature will centralize professional learning proposals, evaluations, and attendance, creating a more streamlined and efficient system. We will also continue to establish a data-driven feedback loop that connects professional learning outcomes to student achievement, conduct a time study to better understand how PL time is used and where we can maximize impact, and continue to expand leadership development opportunities for all staff. Through our PL structures, we're not just delivering sessions. We're building a culture of continuous growth that supports our educators and in turn, every student in the City Schools of Decatur. Thank you for your attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, this is up to you.
On Slide five, it's mentor mentee engagement. So all of this stuff in that white box canvas planning job embedded, is that just for the new teachers? Because I assume those are the mentees. Sorry, you know what? I'm looking at my packet.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Blown with the pictures.
Yeah, sorry.
Next slide.
At the next one. Here we go.
Okay, yeah. And okay, so is that all specifically describing the new teachers or whoever is classified as a mentee?
Yes.
Okay. And so then I guess I have three questions now. So the second question follow-up there is when it says job embedded, so does that mean in addition to those early release days, there might be things during the actual school day?
Mm-hmm. It's not PLC.
And then, I don't know if this is all right, the PL evaluation. So I see the four domains, knowledge gains, relevance, application of learning. And I just wondered, because I don't really know even in my own experience, will behavior be measured? So like I can attend a PL session and I learn that we have new standards. And I could say it's relevant, I could say I was engaged. But then is there going to be something built in for the final component of seeing it in use? Or is that?
That's a part of our observations. So when we are observing in classrooms, we are observing the quality of implementation. And if we see the things that we planned and talked about and receive professional training on, if we're seeing them being used in the classrooms and at what level.
Thank you.
I will say that cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals requires high-quality professional learning. And Board Member Anderson, that evaluation criteria is based upon Gusskey, the most researched evaluator of professional learning, and is the foundation of the ESF framework. And that topic is near and dear to my heart, as it was the topic of my dissertation. And so I know it well.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Newton-Scott. For the update, high-quality professional learning is an objective in our strategic committed to a minimum of annual oversight of all 16 objectives in our five-year strategic plan, all in Decatur. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next item.
Chair Sultan, I would like to call on Mrs. Jennifer Burton, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, to provide the monthly update on the new Early Childhood Learning Center and DHS expansion project.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, Vice Chair Utz, esteemed members of the Board, Student Representative Batra and Superintendent Dr. Dima Whitaker. I'm pleased to provide an update on the new Early Childhood Learning Center and DHS expansion project, specifically on instructional programs. This project falls in the organizational effectiveness and excellence strategic. When the new Early Childhood Learning, while the new Early Learning Center is not set to open until the fall of 2027, we are already starting to prepare staff as well as the high school students who will be working with our ECLC children. All current pre-k teachers are enrolled in the Georgia Literacy Academy, which equips them with instructional strategies aligned with the science of reading. We are developing a course plan for our current first-to-three childcare providers at College Heights and the Fraser Center, using coursework provided through Cox Campus, as well as expanding our partnerships with our local technical colleges for professional development courses. For our high school students, our future instructors, we have already adjusted our teaching-as-a-profession pathway and early childhood education path with course content to include structured literacy learning experiences, also through Cox Campus. These are the same courses that our first-through-three and pre-k teachers are taking, so we have a high-quality talent pipeline being built. Oral language is the foundation for literacy. Our brain is wired for language, but we have to expose students to language. We use talk to teach. So I want to show you two videos to show the power of language. The first video is a video of an 18-month-old. Right. So this baby has things to say and is already communicating. This back-and-forth conversation teaches babies about the social and interactive nature of language and one that we would expect to see in our classrooms. I'm going to show you a second video of a child that's much older, about my guess is two and a half. So Levi has repeatedly been exposed to words like tender, or as he would say, tinda, and crispy, and encouraged to use those words. So when we teach words explicitly, we'll see strong vocabulary in our students. And not only will we see this through our classroom instruction, but these practices will be shared in our community and family classes as well. So we all know and expect to see our classrooms filled with books like these, Jabari Tribe or Spoon. But what makes books so powerful is the conversations and understanding that students gain from books. Our teachers will use a process like dialogic reading, which is an evidence-based practice that has a positive impact on vocabulary growth. The first step, our teachers would select tests that are culturally relevant and reinforces our future readiness skills. So here you see the future readiness skill theme, I can be kind to others and myself, or I can persist. Then, these that I've just highlighted are tier-two words, which we would teach explicitly. Tier-two words are beyond conversational words like try and help. The teacher will explicitly teach these words. And as they're reading, will ask students questions to promote dialogue and include practice of the new vocabulary words that are taught. In addition to the testing that we need, our staff will also need to be trained in our adopted curriculum. We've not finalized our curriculum yet, but we hope to go through a curriculum vetting process alongside the College Heights team to find a curriculum that would possibly serve both locations. So here you see pictures of a classroom design, an outdoor play space, and high school instructional spaces. Our building will have classrooms for each developmental age. The Early Learning Center's classrooms are developmentally appropriate, inclusive, and purposely designed to meet the needs of young learners. Each space reflects CSD's belief that early education should be joyful, safe, and rooted in exploration. Classrooms will be organized into clearly defined learning zones like dramatic play, literacy blocks, science, art, and sensory areas that invite exploration and hands-on learning. We'll procure furniture, fixtures, and materials sized for young children to promote their self-sufficiency. Labeled bins and reachable supplies will encourage children to make choices, to take initiative, and care for their environment. And each classroom will provide clear lines of sight for teachers, direct exits to hallways and outdoor learning areas, and safety features consistent with Georgia Decal and state fire codes for early childhood programs. Our ECLC design will also include learning opportunities on the histories and celebrations of our Beacon Hill community. We will have a multi-functional indoor play space that can be used during implement weather. And remember, this was a must from Dr. Whitaker's Elementary Student Advisory Council, that we must have that indoor learning space. This space can also be used for adaptive play, physical therapy needs, and also a space for special guests during indoor field trips. Our classrooms will include direct access to secure outdoor learning spaces that promote growth motor development, sensory exploration, and imaginative play. The Continental Divide themed playground will celebrate the unique geological feature that actually runs through our city with structures and color palettes symbolizing how water flows towards the Atlantic and west to the Gulf of Mexico. The center includes welcoming family spaces for drop-off, parent conferences, and parent engagement, reinforcing CSD's commitment to partnership between school and home. The Early Learning Center will be a lab school, which means our high school students studying early childhood education will have the opportunity to observe and interact with children, gaining field experience as part of the requirement for obtaining their Child Development Associate, or CDA. Each of our classrooms will be connected to an observation room where our high school students can take anecdotal notes and study effective teacher practices in a way that does not distract the children. They will also have a separate classroom where they can receive pathway instruction from the high school teacher. This classroom will be an adaptable space to accommodate pathway curriculum activities like learning how to diaper, wash hands, set up their classroom. Because the new ECLC is a lab setting, students from first to 12th grade are learning from one another. So as we continue our collective work toward opening the Early Learning Center, this timeline represents the heartbeat of our progress. In September, several critical milestones were completed. The Board of Education Operations presentation took place, aligning operational logistics with our opening timeline. We completed initial planning sessions with Human Resources to map position descriptions and critically requirements. In October, we received our guaranteed maximum price, which was approved by the Board along with a finance plan on October 14th. In November, our focus shifts towards professional capacity building. We are developing a continuing education plan and partnerships for all CSD early learning staff. We will post the principal position to begin recruiting the instructional leader who will guide this new school community. This is an essential milestone that allows us to begin leadership onboarding and community engagement ahead of the 2027 opening. As we close out the year, December will be a major transition month. We'll finalize the scope and sequence for professional learning, ensuring that alignment between the Fraser Center, College Heights, and this new ECLC. We will celebrate our official groundbreaking ceremony, a visible milestone that symbolizes the start of construction and the tangible realization of CSD's investment in early learning. As we enter January and February, our focus shifts to instructional design and family engagement. In January, we'll begin our enrollment awareness campaign, which is designed to reach families early and provide transparent access to information about eligibility, tuition, and timeline. And in February, we'll finalize our curriculum resources. This timeline represents a living roadmap toward creating equitable access to early learning. This term ensures that we are thoughtful, data-driven, and intentional about every decision. From solidifying our foundation this fall to hiring our inaugural principal in December and launching enrollment early in 2026, our progress reflects a shared commitment to children, families, and the promise of opportunity that early education represents. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's a question. Um, I know you mentioned in terms of looking for curriculum, um, and hopefully, potentially, College Heights and the new ECLC will have the same curriculum. So is there a possibility that there could be two different curriculums?
It could be that way. Um, we certainly, we would hope that it would be the same just for continuity. Um, but it is possible that there could be other needs needed. You know, if there is, there are special needs classes at, you know, let's say, at College Heights. They may be parts of curriculum that may be different than what's needed at the new ECLC. But we want them to be as streamlined as possible just to build that cohesion and that professional learning community across both centers. Um, but I think there is opportunity, just like how we in our own schools, there are some things that are unique about each building or community. I wanna leave space for that.
And the last thing is, I'm just excited about, uh, the new ECLC being a lab school and the opportunity to nurture homegrown educators here at Indicator who will, you know, potentially stay here and continue, you know, their investment in their community. So I'm excited about that.
I think I wanted to piggyback, so one of the questions was about the curriculum, but I understand that part now. And so to the kind of lab school thing, my daughter's been teaching as a profession, and shout out to Ms. Lewis, um, she loves it. Uh, Ms. Lewis seems so love it, but my daughter does too. And I believe it's for the older students, meaning they go to the elementary schools that are at Indicator right now, or she will next year. So I'm curious about the early childhood pathway and the teaching as a profession pathway. So I guess I have a few questions. When the ECLC is built, will it still fundamentally be for the early childhood pathway? Since I thought the teaching as a profession pathway was beyond early childhood, or am I wrong?
It is, but teaching as a profession also covers pre-K, and so our new Early Learning Center will have, um, pre-K. So it would be both.
And then the other question is to the, I guess, the lab component. So right now, I know nothing about, you know, the student experience at the Fraser Center other than I think our early childhood pathway students are working in the Fraser Center. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So when we open the new ECLC, will those high school students in that early childhood pathway still be in the classroom with the students? Or will they be observationally participating?
Yeah, both, yeah. We have so many students. Um, our pathway is actually exploding. Um, and so the idea is that kind of when you're new, you're more in the observational phase. And then as you learn more, then you start getting more hands-on. So kind of that student-teacher experience that you had early on, and then when you actually got to student teach in the classroom, it's kind of that gradual release.
Just a follow-up, that slide with like, um, I think it's Rollins, um... What is the 40-hour principal requirement? Maybe I misread, I'm sorry, I keep using mine, so... There. Because, am I correct that ultimately, the, any of this professional learning will be for the existing early childhood teachers and then the new ones?
Yes, yes. So we want all of our training to be consistent across, um, across all of our early learning spaces. But when you're talking about an early learning principal, there are additional, there's additional training that's involved. So like, through Decal and right from the start, and they've got to be CPR trained, since you're talking about babies. So, um, highly skilled, highly trained.
Um, I just have, uh, one commoner question. There's a, I think, some rumors amongst the community that there is no pre-K at, at this facility. Can you kindly address that? There will be a pre-K classroom?
So the, all designs, we've built it for, um, to include pre-K. Um, and, um, yes, we have, that was what we designed the building for, to include pre-K.
And the follow-up question that I think I've, that I've gotten from a couple of folks is for, uh, some of our younger learners that one, two, or three years old, will they be guaranteed a spot to matriculate into that pre-K classroom? So if they come in at one-year-old and then matriculate on up, are they guaranteed a spot to go right into the pre-K classroom? I believe that that's the way it is at College Heights, where if they come in early, they get first priority into pre-K. Will it be like this at the new facility? If you don't know, if we haven't decided.
Yeah, we haven't decided, but, um, but I think our plan is to, it may not be at that center. You know, if we have forty-three-year-olds that need to matriculate up to a pre-K class that only has twenty.
Somewhere.
That's right, yeah.
They will get a spot somewhere.
Yeah, that is our plan.
Thank you.
So, um, for, based on the new Early Childhood Learning Center at Indicator High School expansion update, we plan to continue to provide monthly updates on the progress. So the topics will continue to rotate through the various work streams.
Thank you for the update, Mrs. Burton. When we visited the Grand Rapids Community College Early Learning Lab, the observation rooms were an integral part of the design, ensuring that future educators would learn and observe. Next month, we look forward to hearing from Mrs. Walker for the next Human Resources update. Uh, Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next presentation.
Thank you, Chair Salton. I would like to call on Dr. Lonita Broom, Chief Financial Officer, to gather feedback on the FY27 budget parameters and priorities.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Salton, Vice Chair Hahn, sixteen members of the Board, Student Representative DePacris, Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Fiscal Year 27 Budget Parameters and Priorities are the guidelines for building the Fiscal Year 27 Budget and ensuring equitable allocation of funds based on the district's priorities. The district's budget parameters and priorities are applicable to all four strategic accelerators with a specific focus on strategic accelerator four, organizational effectiveness, and excellence through financial transparency and the equitable allocation of funds. Today, we will review Fiscal Year 26 Budget Parameters and Priorities for the Board to modify as agreed upon. We will continue to obtain feedback from the community via the budget feedback link, and further discussion on the budget parameters and priorities will take place at the November 18th Board Retreat. And final approval of the budget parameters and priorities is scheduled for December 9th. Under Strategic Accelerator Four, Organizational Effectiveness and Excellence, the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Parameters and Priorities are: To present a balanced budget where revenue is equal to or greater than expenditure. Seek alternative funding sources such as grants and rebates. Maintain fund balance per board policy BCL between 4% to 15% of expenditure. Develop a revenue-neutral budget that will not require any tax increase. Ensure the budget is aligned with the district's four strategic accelerators. Invest in an ERP system, which is a financial and human resource system, to manage the day-to-day business activities such as accounting, position control, payroll, procurement, account payables, and human resources. We have started this process, and the goal is to have a vendor selected prior to the end of this fiscal year. Ensure transparent, modified, zero-based budgeting process, which requires justification of every operational request. Identify opportunities for cost efficiency. Under Strategic Accelerator Three, Cultivating and Retaining High-Quality Professionals, the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Parameters and Priorities are: Maintain a competitive compensation structure for all employees. Fund state mandated increases to health benefits. I have not heard of any increases as of today. However, this could change. If you will recall, state health benefits increased from $11,340 annually in Fiscal Year 20 to the current amount of $22,620 annually. This is an annual increase of $11,280. State health benefits have doubled over the last five years. Additionally, TRS is expected to increase from the current rate of 21.91% to 22.32% in Fiscal Year 27. TRS increases every year. Maximize revenue from QBE by carefully monitoring student attendance and class size and accurately classifying student programs and special needs and optimizing teacher assignments based on student needs. Under Strategic Accelerator Two, Building and Sustaining an Engaging and Inclusive Culture, the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Parameters and Priorities are: Support the launch of a comprehensive social-emotional learning framework to help cultivate skills and environments that enhance all students' learning and development. Invest in safety and security to ensure the protection, stability, and well-being of all students and staff. Although strategic accelerators contribute either directly or indirectly to student success, specific budget parameters and priorities listed under Strategic Accelerator One, student success in all areas, are invested in equal outcome for all students and various resources, including strategies for closing the achievement gap, strategic staffing, and early college readiness inside the LPSAC A-100, which measures skills and knowledge to show college and career readiness over time. Invest in an early childhood learning center to equip with the essential tools and skills they need throughout their academic journey and life. The parameters and priorities are not presented or listed in any ranking or order. The Fiscal Year 27 Budget Calendar was adopted by the Board at the October Board Meeting. This evening, we will discuss the Fiscal Year 25 Budget. For the month of November, we will also discuss Fiscal Year 27 School Allotment Guidelines, Fiscal Year 26 Salary and Benefits Comparison with Other Districts in the Metro Area, and further discussion on the budget parameters and priorities. The Fiscal Year 27 School Allotment Guidelines and the budget parameters and priorities are scheduled to be voted on by the Board at next month's Board Meeting. The final approval of the Fiscal Year 27 Budget is scheduled for June 9th, 2026. Prior to final approval, we will have numerous hearings, budget discussions, and community meetings. The Fiscal Year 27 Budget Feedback Link is open, and we encourage feedback and comments from the community. Our feedback will receive a response and will be shared with the Boards of Education. The link is on the district's main page in the financial page. Please provide your feedback with any additions, deletions, or modifications for the Fiscal Year 27 Budget Parameters and Priorities.
Um, just very quickly, make the distinction that that $11,000 unfunded mandate from the state is a per-employee mandate. That wasn't in total $11,000. It's however, getting millions of dollars, yes, okay.
Per family, per year.
Yeah.
Yeah, per year.
I have a question about the, sorry, um, school allotment guidelines. Or so, I'm sorry. But is the original set of guidelines for schools something that the school or SLT creates? Or is it something that the school is given? James, I think you've talked about the SLT. So then the school is given, and then the SLT looks at it. So which, which comes first? Are the guidelines given to the school, or does the school create the guidelines?
The school allotment guideline is created centrally by the Human Resources Department and approved by the Board of Education. Once you receive what would be that allotment, there is some flexibility on your per-pupil expenditure dollar amount and ways in which you can flex on items. But things that are provided for, allocated centrally is coming through the school allotment guideline. And that's what you, as the Board, approve.
Thank you. And then on page five, for the budget parameters and priorities, um, under cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals, maximizing revenue from QBE, so I totally understand the FTE count. Um, what would be an example of scheduling to maximize QBE? And if we're not gonna talk about now, that's fine, when you do it at the retreat. Um, and what would be an example of staffing allocation to maximize QBE?
So, QBE scheduling, when I started, win time was on count-based. And that was an example of, we have to change the master schedule at the high school because you are losing out on funding on a full, almost ninety minutes, which is really two segments when you look at a six-period day on, um, on a block. You're losing a lot of money. So moving win time back then, now it's a success because it's not a funded course in the way it was originally. We had to move it because we were leaving money on the table. So that's an example of maximizing scheduling so that you are able to, um, do that. Um, as far as staffing allocations are concerned, uh, there is a minimum number of children that have to be in a class in order for the class to be funded. And so if you do not have enough children in that class, you forfeit the funding for that class. And dependent upon how many segments, so in an elementary school, that could be funding across all six segments, meaning top of the day to end of the day minus, uh, recess and lunch, you're losing the funding for that entire class if it's, if it's not enough students. Conversely, if you are over-class size in certain segments of our population, you will also lose money depending upon if it's a special ed class or if it's a gifted class. If you are going over, you are also going to lose funding. So these are ways in which if you do not understand the, the convert scheduling, staffing allocations, and your master schedule, um, and ultimately your budget, you're going to lose money. And you must think about that, understanding Georgia Department of Education, Education and FTE.
I would love this, this maybe worked. I'd love to see how much that has brought in since we made that switch to the QBE, maybe as part of our FY25 review on the 18th. I think that would be informative, it would be a good way to do it. Similarly, I'd love, I love this phrase, maintain a competitive compensation structure for all employees. I read on the internet today that our teachers make the least amount in any school district in the state of Georgia. Um, yeah, someone said it with their full chest out. And, um, we were providing that structure, I would love that, particularly with an update, I know some other districts did do some big pay increases. I'm okay with maintaining as long as we are competitive. Maybe as part of the FY25 review, how we did, how we're doing, um, and that sort of stuff. That would, that would be great. And then, um, I, just like, I love, right there, you said, uh, oh, lost my page, just scrolled down, follow Tracy. Um, sorry, uh, to the extent possible, revenue national as defined by the tax rollback form. When do we expect to get that number? It's always been confused. But to do that from your office, essentially what you're saying is not spend any more money in '27 versus what we expect to spend in '26 as we go forward, planning stuff. And so, really to do that, you're gonna identify some efficiencies and some cuts and some changes.
Yeah. And you have to understand, in all of that, we do have a series of tax exemptions. And those tax exemptions, we do, um, share with the community. And when, um, Ms. Arnold Combs, who is our city manager, as well as, um, the tax assessor, oh, not the tax assessor, but the tax commissioner, um, we do let you know.
We had any update about the amount of revenue we're getting from, uh, previous floss, the last times you reported that? And I can ask it because I bet we're gonna get an update later tonight, so...
Right now, it's averaging the same.
Averaging the same. So it's, which is lower. So it's averaging the same, but it's lower, but that's not true for DeKalb County, we're at large.
When I spoke with the DeKalb CFO, he said, "You're receiving eight away." So it's modest, but it starts on that.
That's fascinating. One, one, four. Okay, with it.
So Board members, thank you for your feedback. We will incorporate, incorporate this feedback and bring the drafted FY27 parameters and priorities to the Board Retreat next week. After that review, we anticipate bringing the recommendation to the Board Meeting that will be held December 9th.
Thank you, Dr. Broom.
Thank you, Dr. Broom, and thank you, Board members, for your engagement. We look forward to continuing the conversation at our Board Retreat next Tuesday, November 18th, at the Decatur Conference Center. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next presentation.
Uh, uh, yes, thank you. Call on Mr. Jarvis Adams, Chief Operations Officer, to introduce Mr. James Wilson of Education Planner. Mr. Wilson will seek your guidance on a K2 utilization study anchored in community input.
For folks in the back, there are a couple of seats in the front.
A lot of our professionals are here to be honored. I, I see their faces.
Like in churches, if there's a seat next to you, can you put your hand up?
And there's like a whole row right there.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, Vice Chair Us, team Board members, Student Representative Botter, Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Tonight's presentation will focus on our continued work with Ed Planners as we explore facility utilization and long-term sustainability across our K2 schools. Over the past several weeks, our district has engaged with families, staff, and community members who care deeply about our neighborhood schools. We are grateful for the level of participation, the honesty of feedback, and the collective desire to ensure that city schools of education's decisions remain thoughtful and student-centered. Fairly, it's in white up there. This is a discussion item. No action is requested tonight. The purpose of tonight's discussion is to review and discuss Option B, which outlines a more deliberate and community-driven path forward for engagement and facilities planning. This is not an action item or a vote. It is an opportunity for the Board to provide guidance on a proposed framework and timeline, including, including whether you support extending engagement under Option B. We want to ensure our process reflects both the community's call for more time and the district's responsibility to plan strategically. Option B represents our collective effort to slow down, increase transparency, and involve more Board members before any decisions are made. Before I turn it over to Mr. Wilson from Education Planners, I want to briefly ground us in the why. Across our five K2 schools, we currently have 831 students occupying 1,778 seats, which represents a 47% utilization. Three of our K2 schools each enrolled fewer than 160 students, which is below the 200-student threshold the Georgia Department of Education uses for eligibility for capital outlay funding. Our challenge is to right-size our K2 schools in a way that keeps students first, and honors Decatur's walkable neighborhood identity, while also being honest about the fact that we have largely fixed facility and capital costs. With that context in mind, I now turn it over to Mr. James Wilson of Education Planners to walk us through the data, community feedback, and the proposed framework for Option B.
Chairman Chair, Board Members, Student Representative, Superintendent Whitaker, it's a pleasure to be with you. Very hard to share good information that will allow all of us to have a better understanding of next steps, where we are, where we want to go, just trying to make sure that everyone understands our work and our goal. So you see that we've heard from the community. The last community meeting, a week or so ago, we had a very large group of community members attend. Sorry that we didn't do a brief PowerPoint to get it started, and then for the next hour and say fifteen minutes, James walked around and held the mic for each person who wanted to speak, and they had the opportunity. Very passionate, extremely interested in next steps, and where we're going, and why we're maybe going too fast, and all those kinds of things. So it was well-attended. It was certainly a valuable part of any decision that you are going to make down the road to make sure that we're listening to our community. That's what it was, and very good. They told us pretty, um, correctly, in some sense, that the process feels like it's going too fast, too many stakeholders. There is an interest in having more transparent data analysis. When you start sharing analysis in forums like this, it can be critiqued very carefully, and maybe in some cases needs to be clarified even more. It's very clear that there's strong pride in neighborhood schools and their identity. Our community was very proud of their school. They liked their school, the Decatur School. There's a call, of course, for transparency and consistent updates throughout the process, and we're trying to do that. We are constantly working to try and improve any kind of communication that we have. The online survey that we used, as it says in the slide, you know, there were over 600 people that responded to that. Again, the community was in, in attendance at the October 20 forum, so we felt good about hearing from them. And the interest in evaluating funding and enrollment approaches that could support keeping schools open is really important. As I said, the, you have schools that are in low capa, low enrollment according to capacities. Don't really allow yourselves to utilize state funding, those kind of low. This is an important slide because what we have put together and what we recommend is four committees. And a good part of that is, and you have to be careful with this, because when you break down into smaller groups, we're not trying to separate anyone, we're trying to make sure we hear everyone. So these are the four committees that we have come up with. We think that it gives, uh, gives you an opportunity to really learn more about the school day. You can see it's obviously important for safety in the operation of the school, which talks about transportation, arrival and dismissal, all of those type of things that make school day good. Student experience, class size, programs, transitions, aftercare, services. City Decatur takes care of their students throughout from pre-K to 12, and you want to make sure that whatever we may do in a different structure, that the student experience is a good one. Facilities and finance, revenue is always a big important part of any school district. CFO, Nina Breen was just sharing a few minutes ago, there's, there's always more expenditures, and she shared some of that. Capital outlay is currently with these schools not available to you, and you need to make sure that we discuss that and learn more about just what kind of impact that has in lifecycle needs. So then, and then the last committee, or not in any particular order, of course, but culture and communications, transparency, ongoing engagement. We're interested in talking and meeting with anyone and everyone. We've received a lot of emails, you have too, and they're all interesting. They're interested in what's going on. So two, the way, communication. Each committee will be co-led by one, and then a district staff member. We'll work together with them. We have all of the people who have signed up as an interest. We have their email addresses. We can communicate with them. Some of the responses that we're getting back is maybe this next meeting is too early because it's just two days away. But we're hoping for that because we want to keep the momentum going and listening and trying to make sure we learn from everyone. But that's certainly something that can be debated. Committees will be instructed to meet in work sessions to review data. The responsibility of the district staff member to make sure that the data is available for them, to make sure that, that information is shared, and we'll obviously share updates. It's important that we balance priorities. You'll see at the bottom of this slide, we'll evaluate both keep-open and consolidation scenarios. We'll use these priorities for process integrity, statutory hearings, notices, open decisions, transparent data, and we'll do that. Students first, equity and access, safety in operations, fiscal sustainability are all important parts. We very strong committee, given an opportunity for us all to learn more about this process so when the time comes, better decisions can be made. Next steps. So the first community meeting is currently set for November 13th. While in some regards, it may be too early, but it's an important work process, we've had a tremendous amount of interest. We've had over 100, you stated, there it is, 116 community members that have signed up to serve on the committees. There's a Board Retreat coming up, as you well know, where we'll be able to review, refine timeline, and engagement. So it's important that we continue to strive to communicate and to listen. And so, process framework is supported by engagement under Option B. Subcommittee structure, all four subcommittees are comprehensive and appropriate, balanced for our community needs. We've also already had those members sign up to be on a committee. There are three committees that are pretty balanced, one's a little less than the others, but there's interest in all four committees. Timeline and engagement guidance, what that's very important is considerations to make sure that we, if we need to, we'll refine our timeline, the engagement strategy. A very important task that you're going through, and it's difficult and challenging because we heard all kinds of comments, some good, some interesting, and whatever, but it's part of this process, to listen, learn, and be able to. With that said, I'm certainly open to questions that you're hearing, and I know you are. This is the appropriate time, I'll try to answer them, if not, I'll get back to you. But we've been listening and learning and working every day. We think the process is good. Regardless of what the decision may be, the process is good. We're trying to do the best we can to make sure that the information you get. Questions?
When will we be able to hear the feedback that you've gathered from some of these stakeholders?
Most appropriately, maybe at the retreat, but we'll provide it for you whenever you want to.
I mean, I guess in public comment, we're going to hear some of that feedback tonight, but.
Well, I mean, I'd, yeah, well, ideally, it's supposed to be consolidated from him.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, yeah.
So we've been gathering, and we'll be prepared when we get to direction that you want. So I was kind of thinking of retreat, I'll do whatever.
I'd like clarification about the numbers. So since our August retreat, I've been citing that percentage of households that don't have children is 71%, because that's what was presented to us in August. But multiple people are providing information, and it looks credible, but I don't know, that says, no, actually, indicators, we have instead of 29% of the households with children, 37% of the households with children, and that's a significant difference. Additionally, I'm being told, this happened when we were refinancing our house. We're two houses from the Atlanta line, and so the guy keeps coming and using Memorial Drive. So I'm also told that the data you were using, or the data that was used, was looking at all of 30030, not just city schools of Decatur, because you have those kind of outskirts like Avondale, Slivers, and so, can we get that part clarified?
Sure. I would debate that with whoever's telling you that. We try, as the first time I'm, hard to only respond to data, data that we receive from reliable sources. So using as an example, census data, census data comes out once every 10 years. There's an American Community Survey Group that takes that and updates it every other year or so. So we use that. That kind of data can be debated. Any data that we come up with, and even with the most reliable of sources, can be debated. I have it here with me. It is an update that is used, the Atlanta Regional Commission uses it, Neighborhood Nexus uses it. They all try to give out good, accurate information. So if we missed something, it was not intentional because we try to research and find as accurate of data.
So just piggybacking on that, that question there, which of those four committees is actually going to be looking at the underlying data and that analysis, right? Because the, the reality is, the entirety of this decision really depends on us getting data sources and data credibility right, specific for Decatur, not the greater area. So which, which of those committees is going to actually be working on and ensuring that it either is correct as it is, or that it gets updated with more precise data?
Hopefully, to some degree, all four. So the one that has the focus of financial impact, they're going to be reviewing budget data, they're going to be reviewing data that talks a little bit about census data.
So, okay, specifically that. So with that group, the finance group, is going to be the one that looks at things like, uh, you know, households with children ratios, they're going to be looking at things like birth rates, projected birth rates?
I just want to make sure that we're crystal. Well, we're not going to be crystal clear because, yes, to your answer, but other committees will be responding to some of that, too. The financial folks, I don't think will be able to just stay focused on just some of that, like census data, like live birth rates, those kinds of things. That'll, that'll carry over into several committees.
Let me ask this slightly differently. If I am an expert demographer, and I have an interest in this, which committee should I sign up for?
The Financial Impact Committee is most likely where the demographer will serve it.
Okay. I just wanted to get that clear.
I guess, this is where I just need a little bit of clarification. I think we've gotten a, a lot of feedback, and I'm not, a, a lot of, of concern that maybe the actual, the actual census data may have some errors in it. So I think, I'm not, I don't know if I understand if, A, we've addressed that directly, and with clarity here, that, yes, the data we're getting here, that we've gotten from you, is 100% correct. The number of households that have children is actually 71% of the number that actually have children, the number that are in private schools, that that percentage is correct. That all of the, 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 the households that we're counting are in city of Decatur, 330, and not DeKalb. If, and if, if that is not, if that, if those, if that data needs to be corrected, I don't know if that falls on the committees versus.
We would do that.
Okay. So, are, is, is that something that needs to be, are you, are we saying here with clarity for the record that the numbers that you have presented here are 100% correct? Or if they're not, when would we expect that, that those numbers will be modified? Because I think like Board Member said, this, we have to make a decision based on the accuracy of those numbers. I just want to be clear with both.
We believe they're correct, but we're going to study it more because we've heard that maybe some of our data isn't accurate. And, and that's the reason I went to census data, because census data is every 10 years. But there in between that, every other year or so, there's the American Community Survey. And so we're depending on that to learn more, but a lot of that information can get outdated very quickly because of the time span. And so we all are accustomed to census, but we also know it comes around, takes over years, and then you have others that are trying to support that and give updates, and you can get different. So we've just been using the American Community Survey, but even their data, they only do it every other year. So it's, it's a potentially not outdated, but most recently have. But we always search for data that we can trust. That doesn't mean that there's That doesn't mean that there's something incorrect because we possibly missed it, or it's just interpretation. We're very careful. Everything we do.
So could we, so could we expect, could we expect that those act, those numbers are brought back to us with accuracy from you by the retreat then?
Sure, absolutely. We're working on that, because we heard that maybe someone was debating. So we're rehearsing and looking to see, okay, if we miss something.
I would imagine, I mean, I'm not anywhere near expert in this, but I would imagine that, if you may, the free, the data could change so quickly, and it's difficult to say that the data you presented last week is a hundred percent accurate, that even data that you pull from last year, it just seems like that, that can be challenging and tricky.
It can. And thanks for saying that, because as much as we try to make sure that anytime, and you know how many times I've shared with you, the Atlanta Regional Commission, we depend on them, that's their job to give us this kind of stuff. But it changes. I've been working with them, I was trained by them as a demographer. Several years ago, I've been working with them for years. They're a very reliable source, but it changes. So if I look at it today, and six months from now, I look at it again, it's going to be different.
And I would imagine the same would be true for some of the data that we've been receiving from our, you know.
That.
The numbers that are changing. That is changing.
It does. And so it's, it's a good challenge for someone like myself to try to make sure that if I'm going to come up here in front of you, I'm giving you the right information, but it does change. Especially with live births and things like that, which you can look at it by city, you can look at it by county, it just doesn't always match.
Well, remember.
I have two more, I have two more things real quick. I know that we have also gotten feedback about, I saw that we're going, the committee's going to be co-led by a district staff member as well as a community member. And so, you know, we've got an email saying, you know, well, like that process could be flawed. District staff member being on the committee. But I want to, you know, respond that the district, our district staff has information that, you know, our average community members wouldn't have access to. And so I think it's important, I, you know, I'm hesitant to come up in these meetings without district staff present to fact check the information that we share, because there's so much that even as board members, we're not aware of when it gets into the nitty-gritty of things. So that's one thing, I'm glad that we will have, I'm appreciative to our community members to our volunteering to be on these committees, and I'm also very appreciative of the staff members that will be co-leading, because they will have access to current, you know, updated information. So that, but I have two more for questions. Everyone who signed up for a committee, were they, have they been assigned to a committee?
Not, not as of yet.
Okay.
All right, so we have all their email addresses.
Okay.
So just maybe you're looking for a little direction tonight, if we're ready to go with this, and we can email them.
Okay, thank you.
Well, member Anderson. So first, back to the data, you know, what I've landed on is that you've used reliable sources and provided information, but there's additional information. And so I don't think it's a matter of one person is wrong and one person is right, but I'm going to treat this the same way I do my health or my own finances, and I'm going to get a second opinion. And so in this case, I want to know, not a second opinion on you, I want to know why we wouldn't be entertaining things like DPH. So if census isn't giving birth rates for the first year, then yeah, we need to look at that. So I would also like to know, I guess it's by our retreat, what sources you've used and how you've recognized what's been put forward, because the emails I'm seeing don't seem to be produced from a generic Google search. And so I do want to make sure that we've got the best information. I don't want to frame it as right or wrong. That's one. Two, I'm really confused about so much of this, and this is for all of us. So the email started with a K through two utilization and consolidism, consolidation. I just checked it. And so it is confusing to know what exactly we're doing. What I've heard people ask me over and over is what problem are we solving for? So am I correct in saying the possible problem, the snapshot problem of this year might be low enrollment, but we've recognized there's variable enrollment? And so therefore, is the first problem we're trying to address exactly who is in our school district in terms of elementary school, and can we keep those schools open if we have under the two hundred? We have the fixed rate at the school, but now we're looking at possible increases in student enrollment through things like tuition? And I think we heard thirteen hundred children for many of our ECLC presentations. So I, I really want a clear understanding of what we're doing, so I can answer the question to people.
Well, remember. Yeah, so again, piggybacking off a lot of that, well, member Anderson, this is fundamentally a due diligence. The net product is going to be a cost benefit analysis on each of these scenarios. Step one of any due diligence is really to form the hypothesis for what you're going out to test in the data. And so I actually agree, we could probably use a clearer problem statement, right? It seems to me that what we're looking at is, we have noticed a significant decline in enrollment, and the hypothesis is it's fiscally prudent to look at consolidation as a way to resolve that enrollment decline. But that, that assumes a couple of things, right? And those assumptions need to be tested. The first thing that assumes is that it's a permanent decline in enrollment, and that what we are seeing is a sustained systemic enrollment decline that isn't likely to change. I don't know whether that's true or not. I do know that every two-year data and every ten-year data from the census is probably not resolved enough to truly answer that question, right? And so there are other data sources. It's not because the data is wrong, or that your analysis is wrong, or that anybody is wrong, it's that we're trying to answer an extraordinarily complicated problem in very quickly moving short time. Quickly moving short time range data. Birth rates from DPH, for example, is a good example of that, right? So we ought to be able to test, is enrollment down on a permanent basis, or are we experiencing an unusual decline related to something that might have impacted birth rates five years ago? I don't think anyone, I mean, I don't know, something happened five years ago that might have impacted birth rates?
Well, because I looked at it earlier today, it's real.
Yeah, so then that question becomes, are we actually sure that we're at a new normal in terms of birth rate, or are, do we need to actually examine data whether this might be a temporary situation? I'm not here to prescribe an answer, I am suggesting that that absolutely must be a part of the analysis. And not having that as a part of the analysis undermines the credibility of the analysis, full stop. The second thing that we're suggesting, if it is in fact our hypothesis, that consolidation is a fiscally responsible thing to approach, we're assuming that there is no other method to account for variances in, in demand, right? So this is the question people have raised regarding, is preschool a possibility in these schools? Is tuition a possibility in these schools? I'm not suggesting that those are a panacea that solves everything, but it absolutely ought to be a part of the fiscal analysis. And I do believe that's what you're saying, it's going to be. I just want to be clear and on the record that that is a part of the expectation when we take a look at this, have we evaluated all options? And just to be transparently clear, I do understand, when you talk about something like tuition, or when you talk about something like pre-K, you better be including the associated costs with that as well, as a part of that cost benefit analysis. It isn't free, there are complicating factors. And so, and so I think, I think coming back to board member Anderson's question around kind of making a clear statement of the problem, that hypothesis helps us understand what data we need to go get to validate it, and it helps us understand what we have to answer in that cost benefit analysis before any decision can be made. I think that it's fair to say, closing a school is an extraordinary step to take in a community. Therefore, the business case needs to be extraordinary in order to justify it.
I think, I think the first thing, though, to clarify is that we, we don't, we need to make one clear variable here, because the first thing we need to do is to gather the, the feedback from the community. We need to first decide if this committee work is what we are interested in him pursuing. And I want to not make too many confusing factors by making too many business cases, because if we have a consolidation model in one arm, but then talking about tuition paying plus pre-K, which has come up in a ton of feedback, I've gotten a lot of feedback about that, that doesn't look like a consolidation model, that looks like more of an expansion model. So you're talking about bringing in different age groups into a school that already exists, and although not bad, it's a different way of approaching things. So I don't want it to get too far ahead of things, you know, we can have a discussion about it, is it good, is it bad? I have some thoughts about where the, where the line would be about tuition students, because then are we privatizing a public education? You know, that's a discussion to be had, but I think the first thing we need to figure out is, is this where we want to go? Does this sound like the, the way that we want to proceed? And if so, we need to be clear with community members as to what their job is, when they're going to meet, and what their performance metrics are, because I think that community members get confused when we tell them, we're going to send them out to do all this work, put them on committees, and then they're not clear about what their job is and what we're going to do with the information. So I think that's some of the discussion that we need to have as well.
Tracy asked the question, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? And I feel like that's more of a board question than, I mean, we hired edut planners.
No, that's why I'm asking.
And so I think, I thought, you know, because I don't want, you know, edut planners and Mr. Wilson to go out and do all this stuff, and he hasn't answered the question, and we, you know, throw him under the bus when we, maybe we haven't stated a question.
No, I think, I think that's directly what, I thought you were getting at, huh? Because what I appreciated from this slide, and I want clarified today by all of us, is that it says K through two utilization. It no longer has consolidation on the slide. Am I correct about this? And I, I think that's a very important first step. I read this, is we have seen changing enrollment, obviously money is a factor, but the first thing we need to do is just look at utilization. Then, once we look at utilization, we see what the next steps have to be. That's how I'm reading this, because luckily, so I appreciate that, kind of moving a step back, I've got a whole host of feedback about some of the other stuff, but I just want to make sure that's kind of our operating framework, or someone fill it in if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think utilization is the right word, because the only way to do a cost benefit analysis is if you're already, or if you are also presuming one of the outcomes is keeping a school open, right? And so that, that, I think that using the word consolidation, I think incorrectly communicated that that was the decision that had already been made. Talking in terms of utilization means that we haven't actually made that decision. Keeping the school open is a very possible outcome here. To answer the board chair's question, I do think this is the approach we should start to take. I mean, I don't feel like there's really an alternative, right? We'd be flying in the face of what the community has clearly requested. So I think it is incumbent to us to take a little bit of time, step a little bit back, engage the community through some of these structures, and do that proper cost benefit analysis, so that we can make an objective decision.
So just for clarification, I see these things that each committee falls under, you know, these committees' responsibilities, but then I hear, board member, who's asked about, um.
Demography.
Yeah, and, and then the responses, I think everybody would, so how do we get clarification? How do we come to some consensus on what these committees, I can see this like being very confusing, if we're, if we're saying verbally that, oh, that teachers in may look at, you know, demography.
Demography, yeah.
Demography, you know, so will we clarify that, or will they clarify that?
Can I ask a follow-up to that? I want to know how those committees were formed, like, did you use the two hundred and fifty-six people that showed up at Beacon and the six hundred and some odd survey, and synthesize that to create those four committees, like?
There was a lot of effort on several people's.
Oh, we can answer Dr. Johnson's.
How will we clarify what the work of the committees, what we are asking them to do? Is that something that the board should decide? Is that something that the community is going to decide?
We have kind of a definition for each committee.
Okay.
When we meet, whether that's in two days or later. And try to structure and define exactly what their goals are to be, a giving example of school safety, multiple partnerships, safe routes, things like that. We'll try to get them energized and participating, so we can get the answers better, so the next time we're here, we have those answers. It's going to have to work a little bit, we're getting there. We don't have it fully defined to the point, and we don't even know for sure which person is going to be there Thursday night, so we'll do some organization then, pretty quick. But we think it's important to, to move forward from our last community.
It just feels like there should be, I know that there should become, if ultimately the board is going to make this decision on what should happen next, that we're clear on what information we need from them.
We're looking for, yeah.
To make that decision. And I'm, I'm hesitant, or kind of nervous about just turning it over, because it's going a lot of different directions.
I think you need to.
I, I had, I had COVID flashbacks that you and I did, where committees came back with things that weren't what we asked or what we had. I want to, first of all, Ms. Wilson, thank you for hosting our committee and dealing with our community and all the amazingness that it is. The question to me, I mean, I think the call is pretty obvious, and you said, there's no argable that we have three school buildings with less than a hundred and sixty students. And so there was an article that was referenced earlier, it was like, the only decision we made was like, hey, as a board, we have the fiduciary responsibility to evaluate these school buildings and make sure it's a capital L.A. And if I read Dr. Sultan sent one more email that says, no decision has been made yet, I'm going to pull my hair out. It is the correct answer, but the fact that it has to continue to be repeated, like no decision has been made. So I just want to kind of share what I'm looking for before I feel comfortable making a decision, and you tell me if one of these committees is going to do it or not. So one of the things I'd like to know is, what is the fiscal impact that would come from closing a school? And is it sustainable? Because as board member, I've voted for an ECLC that's serving a hundred and fifty kids, that about three quarters of a mil, and so like, I, do we, is three quarters of a mil to serve a hundred and sixty students is something that I'm comfortable with as a board? So I'm going to stop and let you answer that question. Who's going to answer that question for me, like what the fiscal impact is this year and sustainably in the future that would make me want to do something I don't want to do, i.e. close a school?
I, I agree with you. It is important that we get that data for you. The problem with that is, just like Lomina sharing the cost of retirement and healthcare and all of that, it's fallen up tremendously over the last year. It seems like it's going to just continue to go. So, so the way we attack this is try to do a business process management on it. So we look at where we were, then we try to find out exactly where we are, and then we decide and devise a way to get to those goals. But I can tell you that if we follow that process, we'll come up with good answers. That doesn't mean that we'll have the financial aspect of that accurate, just because of the economy and the changes.
We'll have a ballpark.
A good ballpark.
Better than a ballpark.
Better than a ballpark.
But we won't, okay. You're just clarifying that, like, we don't really know what teachers are going to cost over the next five years and that sort of stuff, and that. Okay, and then my second one then is, what, what would be the financial impact, maybe this is for Dr. Broome, of, of having forty extra students at each of these three schools? So getting above the two hundred, that's something that I don't think we've communicated, or I fully understand that I can talk with. Who can answer that for me?
Well, the larger the school, and this is just a kind of a comment, the larger the school you can hold it, and you have a better chance of being financially stable. But if you don't get up to. Not going to be able to participate in capital. Capital outlay is a very large potential dollar figure.
Go on, what, what falls under the category of capital outlay from the data?
There's several things. There are several things. You need to put on a new roof in any of your schools. After that roof is, I'm just using this as an example, but after that roof is 20 years old or older, you are eligible for capital outlay support. And go up as high as 50. So if the roof costs you $2 million, which is, you know, the size of the school, the gap, then you're potentially either going to get or losing a very large percentage of money. So capital outlay was devised, I can't remember exactly when it was, but it was devised to help school districts. I want to stay with the example of a roof. To be able to put on a roof, because once the roof gets out of its warranty or to the point it needs to be replaced, a lot of school districts, especially smaller ones in rural areas, don't have that money. They just simply don't have that money. So capital outlay was put in place to do just that. So if you can afford not to accept participating with capital outlay, don't have to, but it's there.
So to find that number, then, we could use some of our five-year capital outlay projects. We know which buildings need new AC, which need new roofs. Oakhurst needs a new roof.
Even kitchen.
It would be eligible to apply for capital outlay because it's above 200. Glenwood, Claremont, Westchester would not, because they're not above 200. So we're asking the taxpayer to put a million dollars out to do that. And so is someone going to put those two things together then? I think you are, that says, like, these are the capital outlays for this building, and the expected, and what we could get?
And one thing that's important, and you probably already have it, but one thing's important is to know the age of your HVAC, your kitchen equipment, your flooring. All of those become eligible in some period of time. And now, I always use roofs because it's just a 20-year, what it is. HVAC is 10 years. So if one of your schools, whether it's the high school, the elementary, or whatever, has HVAC equipment that's over 10 years old, you are eligible, if you have the funds to put with it. You have to have that too. So if capital outlay does not give you 100% of that cost, it helps you. And like I said, it was designed for districts that simply couldn't put on a new roof because they didn't have the money.
I think the flip side of that question might be to James's point. It would be helpful to know the financial impact or advantage if we kept all five schools going. So, you know, I think a lot of the feedback we've gotten from parents is the walkability of all the, all five schools. That's probably the biggest point of feedback I've gotten. We've gotten some discussion about property taxes and what that does. But it would be helpful to know if we kept, and it is true that we've had a number of schools that have been well under 150 students for some time, definitely well under 200. So if we kept all five schools going, knowing their capacity, is there a financial benefit? Other than the benefit of the culture of the school, having one school closer? The other question to that might be, are there some families that are solely dependent on having a school that's walkable? Now, we do have buses, but if some kids have to go to aftercare, and they can't be immediately bussed home, and they're relying on a parent that has to walk to school to pick them up because they can't ride the bus immediately home, having that data as well? If there's any, is there a financial impact or a financial benefit? Or any benefit to keeping the school open, other than just the walkability? Decatur's only four miles. You know, it's... Could walk a lot of places. But what would be the benefit to keeping all four schools, all five open?
I think, uh, student, teacher school. Knowing the condition of your facilities. So if X school has a roof, I'm going to stay with the roof, and it's five years old, then you're not going to get any capital outlay funds for the next 15 years. If it's 19 or 20 years old, then you want to make a good look at that at least, because you become eligible. And I brought with me, I keep it close, because there's guidelines for that. And it's not, and it's important to know that, because there are certain things, like athletic facilities are not eligible. Home and pools are not eligible. So there's a set of rules that we go by. But it is important to at least know the potential of what monies you may be gaining or losing if you do this.
The last one in mind, and just the last thing that I want an answer to, is, thank you for putting, you heard strong pride in neighborhood schools and identities. I've said it publicly, I'll say it again, Glenwood Elementary is my second favorite building in the world after my home with my wife, and it's close. On that last one, though, given that, given that no one on the board wants to close a school, we are hearing lots of stuff, is that your job to evaluate the other funding and enrollment approaches to keep the schools open? And how do we get those numbers in that likelihood?
I think our goal is always to provide you with good, accurate information. To allow you to be in a position to make a decision. So our goal is not to tell you to close or open. Our goal is to give you the information you need to be able to make more research every day.
I'm going to press you to answer that question a little more directly, because you specifically asked about potential opportunities to bring further students in. Is that a part of what we're talking about, looking at here? If we have a school that's, you know, all said and done, we've got 40 kids before it hits 200, right? Are there, are we, is a part of that analysis taking a look at whether something like a mix of pre-K and tuition closes back down?
And, and we will.
Okay.
But I will tell you. Yeah, I think we should look at it and see if it will work. You only need 40 kids, and there's 40 kids ineligible.
So can I clarify?
I'm good.
Pre-K play eligible. No, so no pre-K is capital outlay. Is that, I've heard.
Yeah, no, 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 we need to do it.
First year.
Okay.
So the best of puns.
Okay.
Best of puns.
Sure. So that's one thing. And then, yeah, I mean, I guess, I'm just looking at two. And so, you know, we heard earlier how the early childhood education program is broke, right? So then, I think along those lines, you know, what I have heard from a lot of people is, how are you looking at some of the largest employers in the area, Decatur City, that we already have a relationship with, County Scott, Emery, et cetera? Then you're looking, so there's that one thing. And then there's like that second kind of softer-like circle, where the second thing is, who lives outside of Decatur that might want to send their students here? But then the third thing I'm wondering is, if this early childhood program and the teaching as a profession pathway are growing, is there an opportunity for that program largely expanding to be at a lower enrollment elementary school? And then do you get a T D outline? Okay.
I want to suggest that the, and I know we have an action-packed agenda plan for the work session.
You mean for the retreat?
For the retreat.
Okay.
If we could take some time to discuss these committees at the retreat, um, and what our expectations are, so that we could provide some guidelines to the community about those committees. And then that would give also, but that's not my hope. I want to give clarity on these committees. But then I think it would also give edut planners some time to get, you know, the volunteers, you know, paired up and contacted, and then a little more time for them to plan for their first meeting.
That would be extremely helpful, because we want to do a good job. But we need to make sure when we go out, we're doing it correctly.
So would they have the opportunity to still, there's been a lot of confusion about what they're supposed to do on Thursday, their run of show, would they still have the opportunity to meet on Thursday?
I would recommend that you do not convene on Thursday. And let you all come back at your retreat and spend longer time on what you want them to do.
And we postponed the committee meeting that was planned on Thursday for the Tuesday announced date.
I just, I hate to cancel a meeting on 48 hours' notice. If people have already, it's been on that calendar for some time. I know people get childcare in place. Like, I hate to cancel a meeting like that quickly. Is there anything that, any productive way to use your time, given that you've already scheduled it and people have already dedicated their time? Maybe they've gotten childcare, we've already used their time. Is there any, it doesn't have to be, I understand where Dr. Johnson Davis is coming from. I do think that we need to come up with a global mission statement for this, and then KPIs for each individual committee, and then give that to you for you to give back to them. But I do, if a meeting is, a community meeting is already in place, I do think we need to be good stewards of people's time and figure out a way to maybe utilize them productively. I really would hate to cancel on folks with like...
Why wouldn't we perhaps on Thursday seek the community's input for what their perspective is on what the KPIs and things are? I mean, if we're going to have...
I'm ready. So we're going to have to have good input from them to help organize it, just to set in.
Do you think that addresses your concern? I mean, the meeting is still there, it's not actually doing the analysis yet. It does not appear that we're prepared for that, right? But it is helping frame what is going to come out of this. And then that can be a direct input into the work session, I'm sorry, what do you call it?
Retreat.
Retreat, where we're able to crystallize that detail.
So will these folks be notified sometime today that they, because it's not an application process, so will they be notified today as to what committee they are on?
We have their email address. We have the choices that we may think. We know how many pass for each committee. But we're on such a tight timeline, so we can communicate with them.
So you're asking Dr. Sultan for them to be communicated to, for edut planners to inform the community member tonight of what committee they are on?
I know, I wasn't, I'm advocating either way. I was just asking if that was his plan, just because we've gotten so much feedback that they hadn't gotten...
I think it wasn't the time to do that.
That they haven't gotten any correspondence at all. Like, they filled out a form, the form doesn't tell you which way the communication is going, just so that they get, folks get some feedback as to what direction they're going. It's not an application process, it's not like they have to apply and be accepted, just so that folks...
I think you wanted more time to do that, to notify community members. I don't think it's, it'll be difficult to happen by Thursday.
It will be. But we're prepared to do that, because that was the plan. But to try to get as organized as we can, so when the members come, they know what committee they're on and some direction for that. It would be, so I think we're looking at two things. We're going to send out the emails, you know, tonight, tomorrow. We'll meet on Thursday, come to the retreat, have ourselves better organized, and then go out, with the board's direction, and start the session.
My only thing is, well, it could be a way, the community could meet on Thursday to give their input on their expectations for the committee. But they want to see the committee come up with, that could happen without the committee's timing. I don't want to, I don't want to have a meeting just to have a meeting if folks were expected to do one thing. But it seemed like we got a lot of feedback saying that this wasn't enough time. That Thursday wasn't enough time. It felt like to me that was an overwhelming sentiment in the emails we received about Thursday's meeting.
I got the feeling that people were saying that they had planned to come on Thursday, but they didn't know what they were supposed to do. That they got those, they hadn't heard what committee they were supposed to be meeting in, and that it was supposed to be a committee work group, but they had no idea what committee they had gotten. So I, like I said, I know that I get irritated when I have something on my schedule and then somebody cancels like the day before. So I'm just advocating that we get, we make good use of people's time who are dedicated to giving us feedback. It doesn't have to be that they meet in committees, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I feel strongly that the Thursday meeting should take place, that everyone has already, you know, scheduled their time, be able to go, and then they can give their feedback, and perhaps even confirm committees, because when I tried the form, you can only pick one. So if you've had 100 people that wanted to do the finance committee, and only five that wanted culture, you know, that's already going to be a logistical thing. The other thing, since we do have a student board rep, you know, I have two questions. How are we including students, that's one? And then two, whether it's 63% or 71% or somewhere in the middle, all the people that don't have children? It's still not clear to me what we've done to let what appears to be the majority of Decatur homeowners know that we are looking at all things school utilization. My two questions.
Members, where they only could apply for one, that allowed us to see a fairly good... Got one that's a little less than the other three, but still enough members to... But we kind of know we've got 30 here.
So it sounds like there's some emerging consensus that Thursday happens, that they learn the committees that they have applied for and where they are, and the meeting is spent to put some structure around what the community believes the outputs of these groups ought to be. That feels like a reasonable use. It still accomplishes some of what Dr. Sultan is describing. And it allows to inform us in the retreat around our expectations of what we see come out of these committees as well. Am I correct in saying that? Does that sound right to me? Yeah, okay.
Just to clarify, have there been like a location or time tied to the correspondence?
Four different locations. The committee member and employee, including myself, one of them. So we'll have two people there to try to make sure we get organized and try to get as much information as we can.
That would be, that would be moving forward after, once we get, after we get it all settled.
But I think she's asking about Thursday.
Thursday is just Beacon Hill Middle School at 6:30. After we get it all settled, then it will be different locations so that we can be able to maximize participation, have a small group, so forth.
And leaders in district staff have it been identified yet, or they haven't?
District staff?
Like, the co-leaders have both been identified?
Of district staff?
No, the community, no.
Oh, the committee.
And Mr. Wilson, where will you be publishing data as you get it? So as you collate your community feedback, when you get committees together, who the district leader is, where will folks be able to access that data if they want to see it?
This time, we have set it up where we go to Jay Wilson and Ed Planer.
I'm sorry?
Jay Wilson and Ed Planer.
So they'll have to go to your website to get...
That's the tentative plan, that's the... Because we were debating just how we were going to communicate with everyone. So we kind of just set that up as a temporary to get started.
Oh, he's talking about email. No, we will, okay, I think he was giving his email address. We will have information, obviously, shared in work sessions and retreats that we will also put up on our website.
So to all be on the same, like, folks can go to the same link at the top of the CSD website, Heather, and then all data, if he gets it, and be found there, that one.
Can I also just make a general request? That if we're going to be having community meetings, a full communication to the community around the content and what's going to be happening in that meeting happens at least a week in advance? I think that this is a little bit last minute here, and I'd like to see us be more disciplined about. And that includes saying, if something comes up that inhibits us from being ready, right, in whatever that event, then that meeting pushes out, right? I do think timeliness is a critical part of communication, and this feels quite last minute, frankly.
I think this is on, that's on, that's on us, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's all of us, right, jointly, not just, I'm not, I'm not blaming you for that. Right, no, no, like, us as a entity should be able to communicate at least a week in advance.
I think one of the other data points that maybe we could consider looking at, which we've gotten some feedback about, is classroom utilization. So within the school buildings, I think folks have gotten confused about how many of the classrooms are at full capacity, how many are being used for specials, like art, that sort of thing. And including, if we were to consolidate a school, to push a school up to absorbing 40 or 50 more kids, how that might affect some of our students with special needs? So I would just be interested in knowing some of those things as well.
Actually, one of the first things that we would want to do is to find out true utilization of the school. And gosh, while the numbers say this and the capacity... at the school, figure out why the numbers say this and the capacity says this and state capacity and all that kinda thing, when you've got specials, when you've got small groups, large groups and all, it is really important, you know, how many classrooms you need to house X numbers, not just the formula, capacity is this and you got a hundred and twenty kids, so do that all the time with every district, really know what's going on in the district.
To the communication part, if we go to the top of the website, then are we gonna change that, because I think we need to be far more consistent with the way we communicate, so our five K through two utilization, this says school consolidation and redistricting, so any community member not engaged is gonna look at that and then continue to tell us, why are you closing my school, so are we going to have a consistent description that thus far is K through two utilization, and are we gonna make sure on the website and anything else that we're sharing that that is consistent, because I feel like that's the same thing as being on top of it and not last minute.
I agree, I mean, I, yeah, I absolutely think the way that it's written, communicated and structured anywhere needs to be considered off the board, again, that is not you specifically, that is us, we need to make sure that that happens.
Sorry, can I just, let me just clarify everyone's jobs to my understanding, so the community on Thursday will go to the community meeting and there they will give, they'll understand their assignments and give us feedback on how the committee process, committee process should go, and then we will work with Ed Planners to come up with our own vision of what the committee process will look like, and then you, and so you and your team until the board meeting will answer some of our questions that we still haven't answered about the data.
I think some of the other thing that we as board members need to come to understand at our board retreat, and I think that's a good synopsis, is how much of the committee's feedback we can actually realistically implement, so there were some people that were giving feedback about when we, you know, if there's a time, if we plan to consolidate a school, do it, but don't do it until this date, that may not be realistic, you know, we may not be able to have a committee tell us exactly the timeline, there's way too many other factors, so I think that might be just something for us to noodle on, we may need to be able, we may need to figure out exactly how much committee input we can actually realistically implement so that we're honest with people and able to tell them also in real time and communicate back in our next meeting, you know, we, these are what our expectations are, these are what your expectations are of us, and here's where the middle is, so that it doesn't look like we're taking what you're saying and just not listening, some of it is realistic and some of it just may not, may not be, you know.
So can I clarify two things, I think me and to your point, so my understanding is some people aren't prepared to go on Thursday, so on one hand, Dr. Sultan and I are talking about the people that were prepared to go, but then there were other people that I saw read the email as, board has to accept the recommendation of the committee, so therefore I'm not scheduling to go on Thursday, so I do think that needs to be clarified for people who volunteered to go on a committee but can't go on Thursday, that's one, and then two, while I realize it's not like my classroom and there's a Google form and everyone gets to put their questions at the end, so we can literally look at all of them together, I'd like something that's a little more concrete about the feedback that people are providing and the kind of actionable explanations they're getting, so, you know, I think we can be in agreement that, no, we're not gonna set up an ice cream shop next to your school and maybe we don't need to respond to that, but where is the middle ground for the suggestions that people want to provide so that it's not just a blanket, hey, sorry, we couldn't do that?
Seems like it depends on what the suggestion is, I think we won't be able to answer that question till we, till we get the feedback from the community.
And you really need to hope that through this process, the committee is successful, so they give good information to you, not just one, whatever you're considering.
Because are we not, sorry, but there's so much here, what's going on with the six hundred surveys that were completed, is that just stopping at your doorstep and we're moving forward with committees, where does that information go?
I think, they're gonna consolidate, there's always been that they were gonna consolidate that information and give that to us at the retreat, that was, that's what they asked about earlier.
Okay, so to reiterate, move forward with Thursday, people get their assignments, provide feedback on what the output should be, that comes back to us for our board retreat where we also synthesize and help just, you know, lay out what those committees are gonna do, and that, and that means in both steps, we're moving forward with option B, we are not, we are going to slow down per community feedback, follow option B, and the next couple of weeks are gonna be the work to flesh out what each of those committees is gonna be providing.
Are all board members okay with option B?
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
Are we board members gonna be there on Thursday, because it is no longer what it was like before and it's not, it's not, why not?
I think it's the same reason, we weren't participating because, you know, board member Herndon kinda gave the example of when we were going through the superintendent search and how, you know, GSBA suggested that we are not there so that we are not biased.
Or putting our hands.
Putting our hands on the scale, so we're gonna get the feedback from Mr. Wilson that he collects on Thursday from stakeholders in terms of what they would like to see the committee do. Now, I'm, okay, so just to clarify, option B, what is option B?
You may have to go back a couple of lines.
Option, yeah, option B, option A, I guess, which we did not say, option A is completing the analysis in time for a December vote as to whether we wanna close the school, I think we are all uniformly saying we're not interested in option A, we are not going to be taking a vote in December around whether or not we close the school, we instead are accepting the recommendation largely driven by the community around option B, which is slow down, form the communities, seek the community input through the analysis as well, and allow that analysis to come back to us likely in a March or April timeframe for us to make a decision at that point.
And it's important, you said March, April timeline, this may, I mean, each committee is actually quicker at getting their move, but we've got a good challenge in front of us to make these, or help these committees be successful, but it may take some time.
I am still confused, because Thursday was still this kind of, almost exploratory, the committees are going to start, so, I, but either way, I thought we were talking solely about K through two utilization, and then once we got that, we were framing our kind of problem statement, so with that in mind, I don't understand why we can't go on Thursday, totally accept what y'all are saying in terms of, hey, if we're talking about closing a school, which we're not, then we don't want board members there because that could tip the scale, but I thought this was more, we took, taking a step back, we've taken consolidation and whatever, restructuring.
Utilization.
Right, so if it is simply for utilization on Thursday, I don't understand.
No, no, it's simply for utilization is the work to collect the data, run the analysis and bring forward a recommendation fueled from the community as to whether we are talking about closing a school or expanding enrollment options to get to whatever threshold we need to make it fiscally proven, so Thursday is still the work of the analysis to us as to what our decision should be.
So the will of the board is?
Option B, I believe, that is.
Yes, anybody have any?
Does everybody?
Can I just offer, I, again, I think we should all acknowledge that Thursday isn't gonna be perfect and that we're navigating something new that doesn't have a lot of precedent, so a lot of answers must be clear, and that's why I really appreciate that we're taking the time to do this, and I would love the public to know that the board is really vested in making sure we're doing this process as perfect as we can, I also want to offer that while I don't think the board should be there on Thursday, I would love the community, I would encourage the community and their own feedback to discuss if this board should be there, because I think that would be a great idea, especially because if the board was distributed as opposed to just being one body, I think that's, I think we all have a lot more knowledge on this, but that's up to the community feedback to help guide our own agreement on the presence of.
But the feedback from a legal perspective is that when the board attends community engagements, it is frowned upon, because you're saying the board attends, and then let's just, I love throwing Hans under the bus, Hans starts answering questions, it's people's community, and he's recorded, or maybe just someone remembers it, or maybe Jim's sitting there and he writes an article, because the board said it, and the board did it because it came out of Hans's mouth speaking at a board member, which is fine if he's in his neighborhood, but if it is an event where the board has said they will attend, that is a very different, number two, when we went through the superintendent hiring and we got feedback on what you attend, where you go, what you do, number one, where does school board show up, is they go to public meetings where people are, people who went to shut a school are not showing up to this meeting, but I've heard from five independently that did show up to speak, and because there was no breakout, they didn't feel like they had the room to speak or whatever, they're like, no one agrees with me, I'm not gonna stand up in the middle of this group and say, I wanna shut this school or whatever, that sort of stuff, and they were making a fiscal argument, one of them has spoken publicly previously and that sort of stuff, that it undermines the data, if you will, as opposed to Mr. Wilson providing, saying like, this is the number of people, that is a large number of people, we can compare that to previous public stadiums, how many street people show up, give us the data on what they say, that is the way to go about making a good decision, and the combination of those two things, plus I'll be out of town, I'm not gonna be there on Thursday.
I think it's a governance.
It's a, yeah, it's a governance decision with the board, I mean, if you wanna show up, you can't, obviously, like, no one's stopping you.
I think, I want these folks to show up on Thursday, I think there are, like Jane said, a lot of people that have not spoken up in these large forums, that, you know, some people speak up more in small groups, and I want them to get to work, I think, I have a couple of questions that I would like these committees to address, I've got a couple of questions for the transportation committee specifically, but I want them to get themselves organized, get their leaders together and help us out, and I think if we show up, we may distract them.
We really need to get organized.
Yeah, I think if we show up, it may be other questions that people have for us about things that don't have to do with this, and I would rather stay out of their way.
We're pretty positive with this, that we definitely need this coming Thursday to get organized. We caused chaos there, but we really have a challenge to make sure that we get organized to the point where all four of those committees are.
Any other thoughts now that we're a solid hour?
I'm just gonna make sure that we all agree on option B, we are.
Option B, option B.
Yeah, no other options have been presented, it would be weird to not.
Board members?
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, thank you for your, reminder, the K to utilization study committee organizational session will launch on Thursday, November thirteenth, six, six thirty-eight at Beacon Hill Middle School, those who have completed the form will receive a communication in the morning regarding the meeting, I say in the morning because we're an hour behind right now.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Wilson, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Wilson, I want to reiterate to the public that no decisions have been made. We have, we have heard from you and are slowing the process down, the Board of Education will receive updates from these committees throughout the process at upcoming work sessions, I am a member of this community and would like, oh, if a member of this community would like to join a committee, please go on Thursday, this concludes our work session, as a reminder, the work sessions are designed for in-depth discussion, study and planning regarding district policies, issues and upcoming decisions, many items presented in a work session inform board meeting agenda items, including consent agenda. All right, we're gonna take a brief recess for ten minutes and come back at five fifty-five and, well, recess and come back at five fifty-five to begin our regular board meeting, the purpose of the board meeting and school governance is to conduct the official business of the school district through discussion and formal voting, ensuring that legal and transparent decision-making on policies, budgets and district priorities, there being no further business, this work session is adjourned at five forty-five PM, thanks. All right, we will now call the order at five fifty-seven PM, I ask that you silence all cell phones at this time, we will now begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, at this time, I ask everyone to join me in a brief moment of silent reflection. Now I ask all who are able to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. All right, board members, there is a need to revise tonight's agenda, item ten, future dates in light of the work session, discussion of today's K to two utilization, Ed Planners will meet with all community members, all community members on Thursday, November thirteenth at Beacon Hill Middle School at six thirty PM, also due to a scheduling conflict for our retreat, it will start at twelve thirty PM on next Tuesday, November eighteenth, okay, do I have a motion to amend today's agenda, item ten for future dates? Make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Johnson-Davis seconds the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, is there any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from previous board meetings, do I have a motion to approve October's regular and special calls of board meetings?
Move.
Board Member Herndon makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Utz seconds the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, Dr. Whitaker, I see some people have joined us, do we have any recognitions tonight?
Yes, Chair Sultan, to facilitate tonight's recognitions, I would like to call upon Deputy Superintendent Karen Meaton.
Thank you, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, vice chair Utz, esteemed members of the board, student representative Batra and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker, this evening I am honored to present free recognitions highlighting the achievements of Decatur High School and Claremont Elementary, as we honor each individual, please refrain from taking your seats, instead we'd like you to stay along the wall to my left and your right for a photo opportunity with our board members, we will begin this evening's recognition with Claremont Elementary, Principal Lockwood, would you please join us up front? Our youngest learners are stepping into the spotlight tonight, at Claremont Elementary, second graders are serving as new anchors for our new Bulldog News broadcast, celebrated by students or created by students, four students, we have just a short clip of their work.
My name is. My name is. I'm in grade eighty-five. I'm in grade eighty-five. I'm in grade eighty-five. I'm in grade eighty-five. We are the new, we are the champions, we are the champions, we are the champions, we are the champions, we are the champions.
We are. 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 I don't know why. Oh, good. It's a lucky time. I think. I'm lonely. Hi. We have deserved a round of applause.
Each episode of the show we just watched airs during school crew twice a month, highlighting what happens across the school. With this project, students are building confidence, teamwork and communication skills while keeping their community informed and inspired. Tonight, we have just a few of our new anchors here with us, so we would like to recognize Amelia Wang, Charlie Walker, Luisa Wolf Martinez, and Ryland Ujro. We're just a little bit behind schedule, so we're going to ask that our board members come down to take a picture with our Claremont Bulldog so that they can get home, get dinner and get ready for school tomorrow.
All right, congratulations y'all.
Please, board members, would you put it there today? Yep, yep, I think we can, we can get through fairly quickly. Okay, next we have recognition from Decatur High School. Principal School is joining us. Our first recognition is Mohammed Attiq. Toastmasters International empowers individuals to become competent communicators and leaders. You all can take your photographs as I read. On Saturday, October 18th, the Dog Breakers Toastmasters Club celebrated its 30th anniversary open house gala themed a toast to the home of rising stars. Decatur High School senior Mohammed Attiq represented the Gala Club with a powerful recital of "The Man Who Thinks He Can" by Walter E. Whistler. He showcased his growth, eloquence and poise through the Toastmasters program. We congratulate you this evening, Mohammed.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next, we recognize Citra Bennett and Keegan McCole. Saturday, October 25th, Decatur High School acting students completed in the GHSA We Despise One Actor Competition at Tri-City High School. Under the direction of Emily Nipoll, they performed "Brave Young Girls" by D.W. Gregory, a moving historical drama. The team earned runner-up, finishing just four points behind Tri-City High School. Citra and Keegan were named to the All-Stars path for their outstanding performances. Congratulations. Next up, we will be recognizing our professional employee of the year. Board members, please stay as I invite our Chief of Human Resources to the line to present the award. Thank you, Ms. Newton Scott. We are excited about the opportunity to honor our non-keegan professionals whose dedication and daily contributions play a vital role in the success of our district. In October, we requested nominations for the professional employee of the year award. This award recognizes outstanding individuals who demonstrate leadership within school or schools of school, worked as a collaborative team member in the, worked well with parents, staff and administrators, and provide evidence of student achievement or exceptional job performance. Here to help us congratulate our professionals of the year is Decatur Educational Foundation's Executive Director, Megan Verary. DES continues to support our staff by generously awarding these deserving individuals with a token of appreciation. When I call your name, please come up and we will have a picture with the board, Dr. Whitaker. First, we have Ms. Amisha Edwards, childcare provider assistant. She is the definition of a team, always willing to help colleagues take an extra, take on extra responsibilities and do so whenever, whatever it takes to support the school family. She engages students throughout stores, through stories, art, play and uses her deep understanding of child development. She brings patience, compassion and creativity to everyone she encounters. We thank Ms. Amisha. We have Mr. Carlos Williams, custodian at Claremont Elementary. Bring our professionals to the principal. If you are here, you can come up with yours for you as well. Carlos is the heart of Claremont Elementary, consistently going above and beyond to keep the school clean, safe and welcoming. His hard work and friendly demeanor make him a joy to be around. He is always ready to lend a helping hand to staff and students. He leads by example, inspiring others to take pride in their faces and supporting the school with kindness and respect. Thank you, Mr. Carlos. Next, we have Mr. Michael Calavan, paraprofessional at Glenwood Elementary. A member of Westlake S. He's consistently supporting students, staff and the school community. He demonstrates deep knowledge as a paraprofessional implementing individualized strategies, managing groups and expertly supporting technology in the classroom. His dedication, positivity and commitment to growth make him deserving of this recognition. Next, we have Ms. Celeste Faith, custodian at Oakhurst Elementary. Celeste is a central member of the Oakhurst Elementary family, ensuring the school is clean, safe and welcoming. She approaches her work with pride, attention to detail and a positive attitude. Through her dedication and care, Celeste provides the value of City Schools of Decatur. Thank you, Ms. Faith. Ms. Cynthia Howe, custodian at Westchester Elementary. A reliable member of Westchester City, ensuring the school is safe and well-maintained for students, staff and families. Cynthia leads by supporting students at events, cafeteria and by holding up a towel when modeling school guns. Ms. Felicia Johnson, paraprofessional at Lenona Park Elementary. She was not able to be here, but I will read a few words about her. Felicia is an exemplary member of the Lenona Park family and her dedication and professionalism makes her a lasting, she makes a lasting impact on the whole school community. So thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, we have Ms. Jennifer Sanangelo, student manager at Allen Elementary. Jennifer is the heart of Allen, ensuring that school runs smoothly so teachers can teach and students can learn without interruption. She demonstrates deep knowledge of school operations, sourcing of the organization with flexibility and empathy to handle any challenge that comes her way. Her commitment to the CSD mission creates a welcome and safe environment for all. Ms. Sharonda Edwards, woodkeeper at Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary. Sharonda is a vital member of faith, ensuring that school operations, finances and programs run smoothly and efficiently. She demonstrates deep knowledge and expertise as a school book. Her professionalism and reliability make her an indispensable member of the faith community. Ms. Nami. Ms. Nami Kamana, paraprofessional at Beacon Hill Middle School. Nami is an outstanding special education professional who is consistently supporting students' academic, social and emotional growth. She demonstrates deep knowledge and practices and individualizes support implementing initiatives and cooperating with people. Her dedication, empathy and expertise make a lasting meaningful impact on students, families and college. Next, we have Ms. Wanda Goodness, food nutrition manager at Decatur High School. Wanda is a dedicated member of the school community, consistently going above and beyond to support students, staff and colleagues. Wanda leads by taking initiative, finding solutions and helping others across departments with whatever they need. Her reliability, selflessness and positive attitude make her a valuable member of the school community. Thank you, Ms. Goodness. Mr. Ahmad Bracken, maintenance technician. If not, his, I would read a few words about Mr. Bracken. His exceptional general maintenance embodies true of the CSD's mission above all. His reliability and teamwork make him someone the department can always count on. So thank you, Mr. Bracken. Mr. Brian Rose, bus driver. Yes, all right, but he is a dedicated bus driver and always makes sure that he has a positive attitude with the students and he is a true valuable member of the Transportation Department. Last, the closely. Mr. Kit Lee. He is a valuable member of the CSD family and has been for over 65 years. He demonstrates exceptional expertise and solves technical issues quickly while teaching others how to prevent and address problems in the future. His dedication, knowledge and commitment make, and he makes a lasting impression on the students and the staff in the broader school community. Would like to say all the paraprofessionals that were here, getting in one last round of applause.
Many of the members are here. We'll sometimes start them if they're not here. You can, because people are here. Many of the people are here.
I need to make a motion to amend the agenda. To go out of order.
Oh, you want me to do it? Okay, I'll do it. Okay, I'll do it. Okay, okay, all right, okay. Thank you, Mary. Yeah, thank you.
Look, I'm going to do superintendent this report.
What?
I'm going to do the superintendent this report, so you got to let. Just let it a little bit.
There, okay. All right, thank you, Mrs. Newton Scott. Dr. Whitaker, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes, Chair Sultan. Good evening, CSD. Today, we join the nation in expressing our gratitude to the generations of American veterans for their bravery, dedication and sacrifices in service to our country. I had the privilege of serving our community at the Decatur Family YMCA this morning at their annual Veterans Day breakfast. This month, CSD and school districts are recognizing the contributions of our school psychologists and support professionals. Thank you. We will celebrate American Education Week, which highlights the transformative role of public education in the lives of students around the country. We also recognize the vital role of our parents and families in the education and well-being of their children. Last month, before the public announcement at the Atlanta Falcons game, DHS administrators, cheerleaders and One Goal students partnered with the Atlanta Falcons to honor Dr. Charlie McAdoo, the DHS One Goal Program Director for being named the 2025 Atlanta Falcons Fan of the Year. Dr. McAdoo is now headed to the Super Bowl 60 and is competing for the NFL Fan of the Year. Please take a moment to rise up, CSD, and vote daily for Dr. McAdoo on the NFL website. The link is also available in your CSD Weekly and on all social media channels. We are also proud of Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary and Beacon Hill Middle for their recent recognition by the Georgia Department of Education. Congratulations to Fifth Avenue for being named a state literacy leader school and kudos to Beacon Hill Middle School for being recognized as a state math leader school for the second consecutive year. We applaud the students, staff and families at both schools for their achievements. Before I conclude my remarks, I would like to address some of the concerns raised by members of the community, particularly around board meeting cadence and public engagement at CSD board meetings. It is clear that many members of the community are unaware of what constitutes as board. since my arrival in 2023 to enhance transparency and engagement with students, families and the greater community. Additionally, the CSD committee is well-known for being proactive and knowledgeable in accessing and understanding information of interest to them, including the business operations, our financial documents and analyzing our metrics and our spreadsheets. Given the length, the level of angst and misinformation in the community, I think it's essential that we are also ensure that the community is aware of where to find credible officials and CSD authorized sources of information. Each board member has a full-time job. Serving as a board member of a school district is also a full-time job. As a superintendent, I serve as the secretary of the board and this is my full-time job. And together, we are responsible for upholding the mission and the vision for the school district. Therefore, one of my first acts as superintendent was to establish systems to ensure that every time the board convenes, it's purposeful and productive in providing oversight of the budget, policy and my work as the superintendent, the student outcomes. I will begin by introducing the Board Management Oversight Plan, also known as BMOPS, to the community. I implemented the BMOPS early in my tenure to serve as a month-by-month governance plan of the board. It is always available to the public on the CSD website located on the Board of Education You can visit the site, the presentations planned for every board meeting, work session and regular meeting from now until June of 2026. The board will meet in May of 2026 to determine the BMOPS for the following year. Of course, in these unprecedented times, unexpected issues may arise and they are added to the monthly agenda, which is also public. The Board of Education section of the website is also where you find the BMOPS. That is a board management software that streamlines governance processes, monthly board meeting agendas, board meeting documents and more helping, and even more, it helps boards enhance efficiency, transparency and decision-making. We agree that the public should not learn about a board agenda item solely from the local media. It is also available to all in assembly. The local media is aware, so we want to ensure that the public is aware that in accordance to Georgia Open Meetings Act, the agenda for the Board of Education must be posted on the CSD website in assembly 48 hours before the board meeting. Since CSD board meetings are held, the agenda is posted the Friday before the meeting, providing the public with more than two additional days in advance of the meeting to review the agenda beyond what the law requires, preventing any surprises. Now, this is what we call the board meeting day, because this really is a full day. The board meeting day consists of four sessions, which since my tenure are all held on the same day. The first portion of the day is executive session. The board moves into executive session for the purpose of discussing land, legal, personnel and/or safety matters. These are closed meetings to the public. Second, during the pre-work session, which is open to the public, pre-work provides an opportunity for the board to discuss the direction it would like to take collectively. For the CSD board, this also includes a book study. We typically have one. This is this year's book study. Additionally, pre-work, during pre-work, the administration provides information, presentation and policy draft for initial review before they are moved forward to the public for input. The board may ask questions or request additional details, but the board takes no action and no vote. So, today, we did that with DJE, a policy on purchasing. Next, the board conducts a work session. The work sessions are designed for an in-depth study, in-depth discussion, study, planning regarding district policies, issues and upcoming, upcoming decisions. Many items presented in the work session inform board meeting agenda items, including the consent agenda. I often refer to this session as the one where the board determines the what of the direction it would like the administration to take on the information previously presented during the pre-work session. Again, the board may ask questions or request details. They may actually take a vote for policy drafts to the public so that you can then provide input. That is also known as first read. As a result, you may comment on assembly on that policy draft. The board then proceeds immediately to the regular meeting. The slight change may be the source of some of the angst and the confusion in the community as during previous administrations, the regular meeting was held two weeks after the work session. The purpose of the regular meeting is to conduct the official business of the school district through discussion and formal voting, ensuring legal and transparent decision-making on policies, budgets and district priorities. These policies that, as the policies that were previously presented during the prior month work session or first read are presented for second read action, which is essentially meaning they're adopted. The consent agenda includes traditional items such as the monthly financial reports, personnel reports and contracts that are over $100,000. For example, in February, the board approved the recommendation for a school roof repair or replacement services with an estimated cost of $153,000. The solicitation for that service was through an RSP and the summary, the history of that process, all of that is noted in the item. And finally, at times, the consent agenda will include items that have been previously discussed in the work session, such as draft legislative priorities that were discussed in October, now are moving to the consent agenda in November, which we're going to talk about tonight. The board engages the public and collects your feedback on the regular meeting agenda items via an official Board of Education Google form. The link to the form is available in the CSD bulletin, board newsletter, which is distributed to our families and our staff and community subscribers within the days of the board meeting. And the form link is also a publication section of the CSD website in assembly. At the end of the board meeting, or really right now for today, we move into public comment, which is scheduled at 6:30 with a deadline to sign up for 5:30 PM. And that's for community members to address the board, but the board does not engage in dialogue or question and answer sessions during that time. Today, a little while earlier, we talked about retreats. So, a board day beginning with executive session, which typically starts about 12:30 and ending typically with public comment around 6:30, 7 o'clock, still does not allow much time to thoroughly examine more detailed information. Therefore, when I came, I instituted quarterly Board of Education retreats. For complete transparency, the board retreats are open to the public, in-person, virtually and recorded. The retreat provides an opportunity for the administration to present and have continued dialogue like we did today with the board. This information may have been presented at a high level at a work session, but now it's time for us to go a bit deeper. And it also usually informs future work. Similar to the work sessions on a board day, board members ask questions, they request additional information. However, the board does not take action or vote. There are no public comments, but if needed, the chair can call for an executive session. When I came, I also saw an opportunity to increase two-way communication between the board and the community. The seasonal board community meetings provide a public forum for the board to present information discussed either in pre-work, work sessions, board meetings or even retreats to engage with the public. So, you can have immediate feedback and response to your questions. All of this is in addition to public hearings, which are held in-person and virtually as required by law before the board takes final votes typically on items that will impact taxpayer dollars. As evidenced by recent recognition from the Georgia Board School, Georgia Board School Association, this board not only understands what it is to be a quality board, but also what a quality board does. Once again, all of the dates are on the BMOPS, the Board Management Oversight Plan. Engagement has always been a core value of my leadership as, as is transparency. In addition to participating in board engagement opportunities, I host my own listening sessions for the community. I have advisory councils with representatives from various stakeholder groups. I have soup with the soup in our schools, all of which are open to the teachers, school-based staff and any CSD employee. Additionally, upon my arrival, I hired two key positions. One, a chief of communications to oversee the equitable, accurate, timely and professional distribution of internal and external communications. And then, I also hire a coordinator of audits and investigations to provide timely responses to open records requests and coordinate investigations designed to detect and deter fraud, waste, financial management, fiscal misconduct and other abuses or wrongdoing in the district. Finally, CSD is currently undergoing the accreditation process. CSD is being evaluated as one school system, not a school district with 10 separate schools. Let the collective efforts of the board, the administration, the schools, the students, the families and community continue to make us a high-performance school district. Chair Sultan, that completes my report and I wish everyone a very enjoyable Thanksgiving.
Thank you. It's 6:35, so we'll move into public comment. All right. The following information is included in the board policy manual and members of the public also acknowledge this information when they sign up to speak. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience. The opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign up by 5:30 PM and in doing so will be asked to state their connection to CSD and/or the City of Decatur. To allow for a time for the board's other business, public comment will be ordinarily limited to one hour or 20 speakers. At the board's discretion, public comment, the public comment period may be extended for a specified amount of time or a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual board members. At the chair's or chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to list complaints about specific personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, cheers, applause or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments if they are disruptive. If any speaker's comments begin to verge into areas of hate speech or defamation, I will have to ask speakers to end their comments. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comments or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comments. Instead, a member of the administrative team will follow up with persons speaking at, speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Whitaker, will you please call our first speaker?
Bernard Fraga.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Bernard Fraga and I am a professor at Emory and a parent of a child at Westchester. I sent the board a three-page memo indicating errors in the statistics provided by the consultant and some misinterpretations of data. I just want to provide a few highlights. According to the Census Bureau and the population estimates program that the census runs, Decatur is a growing city. It is not shrinking. The population has gone up 20% in 10 years and up about a percent since the pandemic. Now, the consultant has cited a statistic saying that it dropped by 4% since the pandemic. I can't verify that information. I looked at the same data, I can't find it, maybe he's looking at a different place. When it comes to enrollment, enrollment is up 20% in City of Decatur schools in the last 10 years and up 118%. That is, it's more than doubled since the Board of Education, not you all, but the previous board voted to close, close the school in 2003. Schools have saw the largest drop in K enrollment since 2019, when this decline began, between 2019 and 2024, where Winona Park, where the kindergarten class dropped by 44%, and Oakhurst, where it dropped by 58%, more than half. I also want to cite that, as I mentioned in the memo, 61% of black students right now in CSD schools attend the, or zone for the Northside schools, the three Northside lower elementary, and 68% of free and reduced lunch eligible students are zoned for the three Northside elementary schools. So, in the previous meeting, or in the work session, there was a discussion of what problem we're solving. I wanted to briefly mention this idea of utilization. I think this is important. 47% utilization is a statistic we've heard. Our lower elementaries have not been over roughly 55% to 60% utilization since tally opened in 2019. This is by design. There are three grades fewer than the standard case of five in our lower. Utilization is less than 50%, but very close to it. This is by design. It was a known outcome. Every single projection that was generated since tally opened, including the year before, said that by going K to 2, you're going to have lower elementaries under 200 students. 2019, 2018, 2019, 2022, 23, 24, 25, all of them say schools will be under 200. This is by design. This was intentional. I don't think the previous board would have said, open tally, that meant you have to close the lower elementary because it has too few students. So, why now? Why the rush? And this is why I've asked the board to consider not just slowing down and waiting for committees, but to provide security to teachers, wait for better data and pause implementation if you vote to have a closure until at least 2027. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Thomas Moore.
Hey, all doing. I'm Thomas. I have a first grader at Westchester.
I had whole thing there, edited out, edited. But I'm gonna change that. I'm gonna go again. So this is gonna be roughly two minutes and forty-five seconds to me. First off, I should say that the person, sorry, Ms. Anderson mentioned that wrote the op-ed about trust, that was me. And I'm gonna say that what I witnessed tonight goes a long way towards showing me that this board is worth being trusted. I think that is a huge step. I think that the actions you showed show ownership and they show responsibility. Those are the two main things in my mind that can help us trust this organization or this group. I think you correctly identified that there are still questions, there's still a lot of questions around not just what we should do, but the process itself. I think that's very important. I think the fact that we haven't necessarily defined the problem that we're trying to solve is very important. So I just, again, I really appreciate the fact that you asked the question. And we spent the time, and I know it's been a long time, but you spent the time. Because this is a generational decision. I mean, I have a neighbor who had a five-year-old in Westchester when it closed. That was 21 years ago. And I spoke to him about it, and he still has bitterness in his voice talking about that decision. Talking about the fact that there's still people in the community he doesn't necessarily trust. Neighbors that he doesn't necessarily trust after that decision. This is a generational decision. But the fact that you are taking responsibility for that is huge. The fact that you're taking ownership for that is huge. I can't overstate that. Because I have to admit, I did not come in expecting that. And that's a big deal. And I definitely want to acknowledge that. I think I certainly encourage you to come to the session on Thursday. I think that above all, above being board members, your neighbors, you are the community. You're, this is your city, you live here. So I think you should be invested in that aspect as well. And again, this is probably going to be reiterated several times, but I think the decision to slow down this process, the decision-making process is huge. I definitely encourage slowing down the implementation as well. So if we're gonna look at a possible closure, let's move that, as Bernard just mentioned, to that 27, 28. And in my last two seconds, I just want to say, according, in relation to the budget discussion, it's been about a month that Westchester's had a non-marking ice machine. So we'd love to get that sorted as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cara Ammoo. Is she online? Is she online?
Cara, do you want?
Hello?
Unmute yourself. There we go, yep. Now we can hear you.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to pivot. Because I was, I was planning on being there in person. I am the mom of a kindergartner at Westchester who's actually sitting right here next to me. She's really actually enjoyed watching this board meeting, surprisingly. And first of all, I want to say thank you to you guys, because it is clear that you have listened to us so far, that you have listened to the points that we've brought to you, to the information that we've brought to you. And so what I would ask of you is to use this energy. You, I think you probably know, maybe by the amount of slideshows you've been sent and decks you've been handed and things you've been emailed, how much work we are willing to do to keep our schools open. And when I say "we," I mean the 300 parents on our WhatsApp chat. And we are willing to do this work. We are willing to do hard work and good work. Because how amazing would it be if we could all come together and find a sustainable solution to the problem we're facing? If we say the problem is, we have to have 200 kids, I think we can actually find a solution to that problem, creative means. But when I'm looking at the committees as they're proposed, I really don't see how we can do it. I see committees proposed by someone, and I don't mean disrespect to Mr. Wilson, but that doesn't truly understand some of the problems and solutions that we've been talking about with you guys. And I actually wrote you all a very lengthy email last night, so sorry about that also. But one of my examples was, which committee is doing, looking at putting pre-K into the schools? Which committee is looking at the feasibility of that, of how aftercare would work? About if they would need one principal across all the schools, or would each school need a new principal? Is that one committee? Should there be a pre-K committee? Or I just don't see how that naturally splits up among the proposed committees. And then I'm looking at that also for tuition students. I'm looking at that for, and Hans, I think you made a great point of, where does someone who's interested in looking at population growth and the data we have around that, where do they go? And I hope you guys, instead of just moving forward with the committees proposed as is, think about what, what we need and then build the committees around that. And that's what I'm hoping that we can use Thursday night for. Instead of already going ahead and splitting into the committees as proposed, I think there are just like huge gaps that, that will not be filled by the proposed committees. But once again, thank you again for, for the listening that you've done to us, for us so far. And please let us continue to help you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Rudy Kohlberg.
Good evening, board. I am a kindergarten parent, a parent. I'll start with three simple points upfront, based on deep analysis that I've done. First is, closing a school will make our finances worse. Not fact, this is fact, this is not opinion. The case for closure so far rests on incomplete, inconsistent, and sometimes incorrect data. The board and the community deserve better than that. Third is that the lower operational risk and financially sounder incentives exist. If we first define the problem we're trying to solve, we are all in to lead as one to cater and collaborate with you. So short note on my background, I work professionally in business planning operations focused on analytics, decision-making, and I've long worked in educational equity. I serve as on the board of a nonprofit serving the Hispanic community that I belong to. That perspective informs this analysis. When strong organizations face uncertainty, they do two things. They clearly define problems to solve with both decision and success criteria. Second, they evaluate choices with comprehensive, accurate analysis. Cost, revenue, risk, alternatives, trade-offs, instead of starting with a default outcome, prove or disprove. From my vantage point as an engagement member, that discipline has so far been missing here. And in many ways will be along as closure is the main option being considered. I want to emphasize, I really appreciate your push today to give committees to find problems to solve. And I ask you to give them the ability to make recommendations, not just to prove their name on a closure. And also, please come and listen on Thursday. Do not need to comment, you do not need to violate the legal advice, and just actively listen. But first, we need better data. And what's been shared so far contains errors, inconsistency in methods, flawed conclusions. Those flaws are driving misconceptions. Misconception number one, closing saves money. Once you add the higher cost at the receiving schools, wherever it's closed, extra transportation, maintenance, other additional expenses, a little over a million dollars. Crucially, CSD will likely lose 2.3, possibly over $4 million in tax revenue. No responsible organization would accept a plan. Second, misconception is historical tax revenue gap is just because of Oakhurst growth. You remove Oakhurst from the data, trend does not change, the decline in tax revenue exists, and it has broad bear viable fiscal harm. This is not about property values. This is a community that is worried we won't be able to sustain our entire school system and the quality of education we pursue. Third misconception is that our facilities are unbalanced. Counting only elementary on one side or other of town is arbitrary and misleading. The full footprint shows a different picture when you consider elementary, pre-K, middle school, one school system. More important, closing any high-performance school and selling or leasing facility reduces long-term sensibility and increases risk. These organizations build operational flexibility and even redundancy so they can adapt. Closing strong assets now limits your ability to be competitive today to respond to challenges later. So please, let's abandon the outdated closing consolidation playbook. Playbook defines the decision criteria, require comprehensive, accurate analysis, and task the committees to explore options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Kyle Newsom.
All right. Nice to meet all y'all in this little bit we have. So I am Kyle Newsom. I was at Westchester as a fourth grader when Westchester was closed in 2004. I hope too that my three-year-old, or new to be three-year-old in February, will go to Westchester like I did, like my mom did. This is deeply personal. School system. I have multiple generations have been in the school district and hopefully future generations to come. I'd first like to thank everyone who voted for me as a writing candidate. According to Decatur, there are upwards of 1,300 people who wrote in my name, even though I started a campaign on the first day of early voting. I really hope that y'all listen to the community, what they're trying to tell you. So far, many people in the community, I would have represented District One, not that I was legally able to win. And we're not happy with how the decisions, the processes that have been going. So I really hope that y'all listen to what we're trying to tell y'all. Two questions for y'all. They'll talk about it a little bit in the work session, but I don't think that we've ever actually clarified what the priorities are of the district and the board in all of these decisions we're making, at least not that I have seen. And then also what problems we're trying to solve. I'd really like for us to define those problems, not just at the committee meeting, but you guys. What are y'all's decision criteria and how are y'all making decisions? What will the process be for these plans that the committees come up with? As we've heard, and I also have heard the committees that have been designed so far, do not give us the flexibility to present ideas that could actually help keep schools open. It still seems to be an old model of closing a school. But if all of these plans and processes that we are coming up with get filtered through the consultant, we have a fear that our great ideas could be drowned out through that filter. So we'd love to hear what the back of process is for our ideas to come to y'all. I'm Edie Bergstrom, one of these people. There's a ton of really, really smart people in the community who have put in a ton of work already and would like to put in a lot of work in the future to help save our schools and make this district stronger in the future and moving forward. I don't know the legal risk and whatnot, but honestly, I would love if board members would join committees. Why not work with us, roll your sleeves, do the work? We can show you all sort of wonderful information that we have dug up, the research we've done, the plans we've already come up with, the ideas that we have. Look, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what y'all can and cannot do, but why not? Join your neighbors, let's solve this problem together. And then two last points. I heard mentioned in the work session that some ideas may not be feasible. You can do some of the plans committees might come up with. As we've already said and discussed, or I've got really smart, completely great ideas. I think it is owed to us and the time that we have put in that you tell us why ideas that we come up with are not actually actionable, not just them being thrown to the wind and never seen again. And then finally, as has been so good, and as an educator myself, if any decisions are made, especially if we're not voting until next semester, for those not to take a bet until the following school year, 27, 28, mainly for those educators that potentially lose their jobs in this unstable economy and be behind the eight ball applying for new jobs that they were due to be told, "Your school is closing, you no longer have a job next semester." Thank you.
The next person is Astria Jordan.
Good evening. That was a good way to pronounce it, it's Astria, but I go by any name. I am a current parent of a fourth grader in Tally, and I have a second grader in Claremont. So this is what I, what I have written. Good evening, members of the board. The amazing parents of past students and current students, and those who have students that will be attending Decatur. Hence, one of the reasons why we moved into the district, because of the amazing parents and teachers along with the school system. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here because our schools are more than just a building. They are the heart of our community. And closing them would not only disrupt the education of our students, but also erode the sense of connection, safety, and pride that binds our neighborhoods together. When you close a school, you don't just save money on a building. You take away from, you take away a gathering place that shaped our next generation as the young gentlemen spoke just a moment ago, and supports the community long-term, long-term. We risk undergoing process we've made while stagnating future outcomes. While the K through two population is evenly spread across the city, 68% of lower-income families attend schools on the Northside. Two out of three children of color attend schools on the Northside. A top Title I school in the state, Claremont, and the school with the highest proportion of Hispanic children in this district, Westchester, are on the Northside. For Black, Hispanic, and low-income children, for example, school disruptions would take a 60% ELA proficiency rate down to 52% to 58% for affected children based on the number of retrospective reviews out of U of Chicago. Equity of access is already divided, three elementary schools on the Northside, four on the Southside, and only pre-K plus THMS. 90% of children on the Southside have a walkable elementary school. 75% of the children on the Northside do. And a school closure would likely cut that in half. Given the notes on demographics above, the school closure on the Northside would disproportionately affect families who are less likely to have cars, and how would we expect them to get their children to school? We understand that budgets are tight and tough choices must be made. I ask that you remember that what makes a community thrive is not just finances, but it's the parents and people, the community, that it serves, and to share a belief that every student deserves access to quality education close to home. If we can continue to work together to find a path toward that responsibility and human value our schools bring. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Matthew Woodruff.
My way around, sorry for the fact. Yeah, so I don't think I'm gonna say anything that you haven't just heard from a number of parents, but I wanted to come and, first of all, say that I'm extremely appreciative of the work that you all have done since our last board meeting. Last time I was up here, I cautioned that the decision to abruptly announce a closure had the ability or the unintended consequences potentially pitting neighborhoods against each other. And that that had gotten out of hand the last time this discussion happened. I will tell you that I've been in a lot of the conversations, obviously, on the parent's side, and I've been on several of the conversations on the board's side. And I will tell you that the parents are hard at work making sure that that is not happening. But a big part of that is that y'all have been willing to engage with those parents, and so that void of information has somewhat, that does not mean there's not work to be done. But I will say that the conversations you've had have helped us stay positive and stay productive through this conversation. So I appreciate all of that. In addition to that, I think, as has been mentioned before, I think you're hearing some surprise from the community, to be honest with you, because I think everybody is honestly pleasantly surprised that a lot of the concerns and questions that we have had have come from the board in this meeting. I think you're asking the right questions. I think you're clearly listening to the people that are talking to you, and I really appreciate that. I think that, honestly, there, I share, I think, some concerns as to what this committee process is going to look like. is going to look like. I think it might be a bit of a mess. I think it's going to take a board retreat to sit down and figure out what actually is needed to make some of these decisions. I think you're going to have the tools to use it. And I think you've already shown that you can listen to some of the folks that have already spoken that really have access to what I believe to be pretty high-quality data. So I will leave it at that. I think you've set a foundation here for making use of a lot of really good resources at your disposal. I appreciate your continued conversations with parents and I look forward to continuing to contribute to a positive outcome through all of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Roy Higigi. Okay, give it to me. I want to hear it. Say it.
I will, I will. Good evening. Or should I wear this? Yeah, okay, cool. Good evening. My name is Roy Higigi and I have a dog in kindergarten at Westchester and a three-year-old son who can't wait to be a Westchester Wolf, which is a big system. I'm here today in support of keeping all of our K through two schools open and to agree with a lot of what you all stated earlier, that we clearly state exactly what the goal of this process is and what the problems we're trying to solve are. I really wanted to thank you for listening to a lot of the feedback from the community and commend the board for bringing up many of the themes from that feedback earlier in the work session. The big concrete problem that's been called out is that three of our K through two schools are below the 200-student minimum to qualify for capital outlay, which is a state number meant for pre-K through five schools when we have half the number of those grades. That's our only problem. It's critical that this really officially goes from being the K through two school consolidation and redistricting process to something like a boosting enrollment and getting capital outlay process. That's the problem. I was really happy to hear some of those same thoughts from board members earlier this afternoon and I wanted to thank you for your thoughtful questions and insights. I want to encourage the board and district to take all the time, to take the time to thoroughly consider all possible options to address any funding or capital issues and to bring these problems to the public before reaching for a nuclear option of shutting down a neighborhood school. Again, I was glad to hear a lot of those same sentiments expressed earlier. I want the board to think about what exactly a full-capacity school would mean for our kids and teachers. Special teachers on carts, overstuffed classrooms bursting at the seams. This was the reality of our school district not that long ago during the last enrollment boom and it can be again if we make a short-sighted decision to close a school on flawed and incomplete data. And there's a lot of uncertainty regarding the projected decline in enrollment. There's known issues in the methodology used by Wolfburg, reliance on COVID outlier data, and it's simply not consistent on the ground in our neighborhoods. Not consistent with the latest birth rate data from the Department of Public Health. Before closing the school, let's do some community service. Let's get better, more accurate data, then make a decision. Should a committee have a mandate to dig deeper into the data here? The current committee structure proposed by our planners doesn't really seem to fit that. I think it needs to. And we're a great school district. Folks here at City of Decatur and immediately think schools. The great and walkable schools are why we moved here and why we bought our house in Decatur. Let's use that reputation to boost enrollment of tuition students and increase revenue just like Beaufort City Schools does, another top-rated school district in Georgia. We're one of the best school districts in the state. Let's act like it. We're really not that far off from 200 students in a school. I was going to talk about pre-K. We really should do pre-K. If aftercare is the issue, like it says in the FAQ on the website, let's solve that problem rather than dismissing entirely. Pre-K aftercare is offered at more inside elementary school and lots of elementary schools in the area. So this is doable. Ran out of time. Let's make this a dialogue. We'd love to talk to y'all.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jonathan Bloch.
Hello, Board. Jonathan. Hey, stand by me. Stand by me. This is my son Theodore, a first grader at Glenwood. He has two little sisters, walking to school every day and can't wait to be a Glenwood Eagle. Very soon, almost every day. He's also my resident fact checker. We moved to Glenwood specifically for the Glenwood Elementary and we have lots of friends there, including many of you on board. Seen you all at community events and protests and other places. And so, as so many others have said, thank you for the listening that you've done already, for the feedback you've given already in the session earlier and the way that you've built like this to be having more of a dialogue between friends and folks who want to make the schools better together. I am a consultant at Big Brother, Price L.R. Keepers, and Accenture before that for the better part of the last 20 years. So I've been on the same side of the table with leaders like you during moments like this. And it seems to me that this decision, up until recent days, recent moments, has felt pretty rushed and I think we've sort of acknowledged that. And more than that, it seems like it's been limited by really one of two outcomes. And from my time as a consultant, as a member of this community, that sense of rush and limited outcomes seemed just unusual. I'm hopeful that we continue the path that you began over the past few days of maybe more slowly and considering different outcomes. I'm going to read a letter from Theo, if that's a case that he also sent to you, unless you want to read it, but you want to read it? Hard to know on that. He wrote, "Dear Board of Education, why would you like to close a school? Glenwood is special to me. I have ADHD and big schools overwhelm me. The teachers know and support me at Glenwood and I like walking to school with my friends. Thanks." Theo Bloch. And so with that in mind, one of the alternative options that I encourage you to think about, and I know it's not the first time you've heard it, is adding third grade back to lower elementaries. That would, or potentially could ensure that each lower elementary hits 200. Obviously affects the upper elementaries in different ways. But it is an option and would provide greater stability in the lower elementaries. A little bit less intense. That I'll see the rest of my time, but again, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Theo.
The next speaker is Philip McGinnis.
Hello. Philip McGinnis. My son is a much better speaker. He has the last meeting and well, some other things. Seventh grade at Beacon Hill. And I'm coming at this from a little bit of a different perspective. More about the ECLC and I think it's false to say the two are not connected, the ECLC and a potential school closure, redistricting, or whatever. It's all because of the grant for capital funds. Proven that you can raise $34 million in capital funding to the ECLC. So at the last meeting, relevant questions were asked by a board member about why does it have to be so big? Why is there so much? Why does this? And the proposed building is $35,000. Put that into perspective. It's larger than the admin building, it's larger than College Heights, larger than Claremont, it's larger than Westchester. So let's look at the private side. You're looking at 150 students is your capacity. The three daycares that I looked at that are over 150 students capacity are Smarties. You're doing 40 students less than Smarties. You're doing 63 less students than Primrose and Drew Hills. And you're doing 79 less than the Goddard School on Decatur. All three of those facilities are in buildings between 13,000 and 15,000. That's total. Right from the start, which is kind of your guidelines of utilization capacities on that, for 150 students, you need 5,200, give or take, square feet for clashing. If you double that, you're looking at 15,000. So your building is 35,800, so I think you're kind of overbuilding. I just question $22 million a lot. Your building is a huge building that only is going to serve 150 students. Put it on that site, but build a more smaller building, efficient, easier to use. Consider a public-private, more secure Goddard, you know? Just have the emotional notice because of the bottom. All capital. Talking apples and apples here.
Those are all of our speakers' chairs. Thank you. We would like to thank all of the speakers for taking the time to be here tonight. As board members, it is important for us to hear the concerns from our communities. We will take your comments into consideration. And back up to chair's report. Thank you. On behalf of the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education, thank you for joining us in person and virtually to learn about the progress of our strategic goals. Just before our board meeting today, board members joined the district's executive cabinet in hosting the annual legislative luncheon. We were also fortunate to have the mayor and the city manager in attendance for our discussion with all three members of the Decatur delegation on the proposed 2026 CSE priorities, which we will vote on today, as well as to hear from the delegation what we can expect during the upcoming legislative session. I want to publicly thank our delegation and city officials for attending the luncheon, for their continued support of CSE, and for partnering with us on education legislation. Before I proceed, I would like to take a moment to address the community's concerns regarding the board's transparency and community engagement. Dr. Whitaker provided a comprehensive overview of the board's oversight of the district as well as the administration's role. This included the introduction of a new systems and engagement strategy designed to enhance transparency and interaction with students, families, and the broader community. While the community may not always understand our decisions nor agree with them, this does not imply a lack of transparency or engagement on our part. As a board, we are fully aware of the trauma that exists within the community as a result of the actions taken by CSE dating back decades. For this reason, we have prioritized collaborating closely with the administration to ensure more information is accessible to the public and to create more opportunities for engagement than ever before. Another example of our efforts to enhance engagement is a book study that the board contained during today's pre-work session focusing on modern-day strategies on community engagement. Pre-work also included a review of the initial draft of a purchasing policy. There were five presentations during the work session. The board received an initial draft of the 2027-2028 academic calendar for review along with an outline on the district's progress in developing a high-quality professional learning system designed to ensure that every educator in CSE is supported, challenged, and equipped for excellence. During the next two presentations, Teaching and Learning provided an update on the instructional programming for the new Early Childhood Learning Center, which included information about the training that Decatur High School students receive in teaching as a profession and early childhood education pathways. We also received a summary of the fiscal year '27 budget parameters and priorities. The final presentation was co-presented by education planners CEO James Wilson and CSE Chief Operations Officer updating the board on K through two utilization studies. The update summarized engagement, community participation, and themes to date. The board was asked to review and discuss Option B as the proposed path for continued community engagement. Again, all presentations from this and past meetings are available on the CSE website and assembly. Last month, our school community hosted a variety of events and celebrations to honor Hispanic Heritage Month and Diwali. In November, we observe Native American Heritage Month, a time to acknowledge the rich culture, tradition, and achievement of Native Americans, Alaska Native, Native Hawaiians, and their affiliated island communities. We also acknowledge the contribution of indigenous peoples to the United States and the world. This afternoon, we also celebrated the many achievements of our CSE students and staff during our board recognitions, including the CSE Professional Employees of the Year. Congratulations to all of you for exemplifying the best of our school district. Along with our school psychologists and support staff, we are joining the City of Decatur and the entire community in celebrating our dedicated crossing guards this week. Please take a moment to stop and show your gratitude, your commitment to helping our children, in keeping our children safe as they travel to and from school every single day. This evening, we want to applaud the achievement of our DHS marching band for their history-making victory of being named grand champions at the White Columns Invitational. And the DHS cross-country girls team won the region four to five, the four to five A championship. The boys team finished in impressive third in the region. Finally, the next board retreat will be held on Tuesday, November 18th, from 12:30 PM to 4 at the Decatur Conference Center. That concludes my remarks from this evening. Board members, do you have any thoughts? Board member?
Yes, I would just like to ask if there's anyone in this room that is a veteran of the United States military, would you please stand to be recognized by your peers on this spectrum? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Freya, sir. Slightly self-serving for me, but yeah.
Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next item. Thank you, Chair Salter. I would like to call on Dr. Lunita Broom, Chief Financial Officer, to provide FY25 budget...
Good evening again. We have posted books for fiscal year '25 and this evening's fiscal year 2025 budget review is un-audited and the numbers are subject to change. The district is currently in the process of an external audit review by Malden and Jenkins and final numbers will be presented to the board at the January 2026 board meeting. I vote the budget and all financial transactions impact all four strategic accelerators to fiscal year 2025 budget process filed under organizational effectiveness and excellence with a specific focus on financial equity and transparency. A budget is an spending plan based on estimated revenues and expenditures. It is an estimate of how much the district anticipates receiving and revenue and how much we project to spend for one fiscal year. If the district spends more than anticipated, the additional funds are deducted from the fund balance. If the district spends less than anticipated, the additional funds are added to the fund balance. This slide compares the fiscal year '25 budget with the fiscal year '26 budget. The final fiscal year '25 general fund budget consisted of total anticipated revenue of $104.3 million and total projected expenditures of $106.5 million. The current fiscal year '26 board-approved revenue budget increased from $104.3 million in fiscal year '25 to $108.7 million in fiscal year '26, representing an increase of $4.4 million, or 4%. The most significant contributor to this growth is taxes with an increase of $5.2 million, which shows continued strength in local tax collections and anticipated growth in the property tax budget. Property taxes are the district's largest source of revenue. For fiscal year '26, property taxes make up 59% of the revenue budget. Property tax are an ad hoc tax levied by local governments on real estate to fund public services like schools. The military rate is the tax rate used to calculate property tax. All property owners are legally responsible for paying property taxes. The district offers several property tax exemptions for which resident homeowners may qualify. A homestead exemption reduces the taxable value of your home. For example, if your home is appraised at $400,000, then the assessed value is 50% of that amount or $200,000. With a $50,000 homestead exemption, you only pay taxes on $150,000. To qualify for exemptions, you must reside at the property. Categories of school exemptions are S1, individuals age 62 or older with non-retirement income under $10,000 are eligible for a $10,000 exemption. Individuals age 62 or older with income under $25,000 are eligible for a $50,000 exemption. S5, individuals age 65 to 69 with household federal adjusted gross income under $62,000 are eligible for a $200,000 exemption. S6, individuals age 70 or older are eligible for a $200,000 exemption. S2, individuals age 80 and older with a federal adjusted gross income under $40,000 are eligible for full exemption. Disabled veterans with 100% disability per the Department of Veterans Affairs are eligible for $121,820. Other revenue sources include other local revenue, which increased due to anticipated tuition from non-resident students and graduates. QBE increases modest and remains pretty stable for fiscal year '25. Last year, the district budgeted $1.4 million in state grants and the general fund. This year, we did not budget for grants, but we will add them monthly to the budget as they are approved. Grants are budget mutual in that revenues and expenditures are increased by the same amount. Overall, the revenue budget increased by $4.4 million, or 4.22%. If you remove the grant line just to compare apples to apples, the increase in the revenue budget from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 is $5.8 million, or 6%. Total expenditures were budgeted to increase from $106.5 million in fiscal year '25 to $117.9 million in fiscal year '26, which is a 5% increase. The majority of the expenditure growth occurred within instruction, which increased by $3.4 million, or 5.36%. Maintaining the district's focus on classroom-based services with the majority of the increase in salaries and benefits. Other notable changes between the fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 budget as discussed during the fiscal year '26 budget process include a decrease of right at $13,000, or 87% in instructional staff training. This decrease is due to changes in how the district offers professional learning. As presented by Deputy Superintendent Ms. Newton Scott during work sessions, we are building capacity internally to offer a high-quality professional learning system. The 100% decrease in federal grant administration is a grant. The 18% increase in support services business is due to increases in the district's insurance costs, postage, and increases in salaries and benefits. The 17% decrease in safety and security is due to the reallocation of funds from the general fund supply. The 10.67% in support services essentials is due to a one-time increase cost for the district's portion of paying City of Decatur contractors to identify fiber cables prior to construction, increases in other salaries and compensation, including hiring incentives, PRF increases, state health increases, and new hires qualifying for salaries above the average budgeted salary, and the consolidation of all cycles into the HR budget. The 249% increase in other support services is due to increased costs for professional services in the operational budget. And the 205% increase in transfer to other funds is due to the anticipated supplement from the general fund for the school nutrition program. Also be mindful that at the end of the year, finance does a cleanup of the financial system to make sure everyone is paid out of the correct function and to make changes in account posts as directed by the state. Overall, the fiscal year '26 budget reflects a strategically-aligned financial plan with expenditures growth slightly outpacing revenue growth. The fiscal year '26 budget was built based on a beginning fund balance of $20.8 million, as shown in the table to the right. The $20.8 million was based on the fiscal year '25 budget end-of-year projection. The ending fund balance for fiscal year '26, based on the fiscal year '25 budget, was estimated at $17.7 million, or 15% fund balance percentage. Now that we have closed fiscal year '25 and posted all revenues and expenditures, we can compare the un-audited actual revenues and expenditures with budgeted revenues and expenditures. The total revenue for fiscal year '25 actuals exceeded the fiscal year '25 budget by $4 million, resulting in an overall increase right under 4%. Taxes were the primary driver of the revenue variance. They're passing the budget by $3.5 million, or 6% increase. This accounts for the majority of the total revenue increase. The overage is due to the additional revenue of approximately $3 million that the district received from the county last year, resulting from an adjustment by the CAB County Government for transfer in intangible tax dating back to October 2023. The military rate the county applied during this time was incorrect for Decatur's distribution share. Other local came in slightly under budget. QBE was essentially on target with minimal variance, and Georgia Department of Education grants came in about 34% lower. The remaining budgeted revenues and expenditures of the grant will roll over into fiscal year '26 as carryover fund. On behalf payments or revenue recognition for employer-paid expenses on behalf of the district. Overall, revenue exceeded budget by over $4 million, mostly from higher tax collection and behalf payment. Expenditure now. The total expenditures for fiscal year '25 actuals were less than the fiscal year '25 budget by $2.6 million, representing a 2.45% decrease from the budgeted amount. The 2% variance is a significant reduction from last year's variance of 5%. Instruction, the largest expenditure category, was $833,599 under budget, 1.32% variance. And variance represents $603,548 in savings on salary and benefits from positions that may have been vacant at some point during the year, kind of new employees with lower salaries and employees on leave. Operational expenses came in $230,050 under budget. QEP Services also came in under budget by $474,868, 7.25%. Salary and benefits accounted for the largest portion of the 7.25% decrease at $348,863. The highest percentage variance was in federal grant administration at 98%, or $16,326, and other support services at 39.04%, or $16,425 under budget. The main contributing factor to the variance for federal grant administration was the balance left in the federal grant, which will roll over into fiscal year '26. And for other support services, the remaining $15,352 in the translation budget, which was not utilized primarily because the district received a grant with translation expenses as an allowable purchase. Overall, the district is in a stronger fiscal position than budgeted, primarily due to higher-than-anticipated tax revenue and lower-than-anticipated total expenditure. This combined effect results in a substantially larger positive difference between actual revenue and actual expenditures compared to the budgeted. The impact on the fund balance is shown on the chart to the right. The fiscal year '25 budget anticipated utilizing $2.2 million from the fund balance. High reduce the revenue gains and expenditure savings, $4.4 million was added to the fund balance. The increase in fund balance resulted in a projected ending fund balance of $23.6 million, significantly higher than the budgeted $16.9 million. The ending fund balance now represents 22.7% of total expenditures, compared to 15.9% in the fiscal year '25 budget, demonstrating a strong financial reserve and improved fiscal stability. The district maintains a military rate of $20.30 million, consistent with prior years, ensuring stable local tax support while maintaining a strong overall financial position. In summary, fiscal year '25 closed with revenues outperforming projections and expenditures below budget, leading to a stronger-than-expected fund balance. The district continues to demonstrate sound fiscal management with growth in local revenue, controlled spending, and increased reserves. This strong financial performance positions the district well to support ongoing instructional priorities and future operational needs. This is a visual of the fiscal year '25 budget in actual revenues and expenditures. Expenses are broken out by salary, benefits, and operational costs. The yellow lines represent the fiscal year '25 budget, and the blue lines represent the fiscal year '25 actuals. The graph to the right gives you a visual of the district expenditures, which clearly shows that salary and benefits are the district's largest cost, which makes up over 80% of the budget. Operational costs are all costs outside of salary and benefits, including professional services, repair, maintenance, supplies, and equipment. Overall, the variance between fiscal year '25 budget and expenditures was about 2%, which is within the ideal range of what the variance should be, considering you are going to always have vacant positions, employees on leave, less than budgeted salaries, and remaining operational expenses. The graph to the right is a visual of the fiscal year '25 budget versus actual revenue. The largest variance was in taxes, which we expected based on the receipt of the additional tax revenue. Other local and QBE budgets and actuals were pretty close. The most notable expenditure variances were in instruction, QEP Services, maintenance and operation, and general administration. Instruction had a surplus of $833,599. The majority of the surplus was in salary and benefits. QEP Services had a surplus of $474,868. Of that amount, $350,863 was in salaries and benefits. Maintenance and operation had a surplus of $409,764, with the majority of that amount in salaries and benefits. General administration had a surplus of $207,803, $150,366 within operational budgets such as attorney services, supplies, and consultants. The fiscal year '27 budget calendar started in September with a presentation of the budget timeline. This month, the board discussed the fiscal year '27 budget parameters and priorities, and we just reviewed the fiscal year '25 budget. At the November 19th board retreat, the board would discuss the fiscal year '27 school allotment guidelines and the fiscal year '26 salary and benefit comparison to other metro and last districts. Next month, the board will be presented with the fiscal year '26 mid-year budget amendment, which we did not expect any, and will adopt the fiscal year '27 school allotment guidelines and the budget parameters and priorities. Again, the budget calendar is on the finance section of the district website. Final adoption of the fiscal year '27 budget is scheduled for June 9th, 2026, after community meetings, two public budget hearings, and three public military hearings. The fiscal year '27 budget feedback link is live, and we encourage you to submit your feedback. I read and respond to all feedback. Additionally, it must be copied of all feedback with the board. I will be happy to respond to any questions you may have or provide clarification as needed.
And I don't even know what would be fully answered tonight or needs to be, but I would like to have it explored before the building of the F27 budget. On slide three, I see instructional staff training. So tonight, we had a great presentation about professional development. I believe we had 655 participants. If I'm not mistaken, that is a category that does not include salaries and benefits. Or so, you can look at improvement in instructional services, and that can include technology specialists, that can include platforms, et cetera. I guess I'm just trying to understand how we're offering that professional development, because I think instructional staff training is called professional development in the budget category district, at such a little cost. And I don't know, like I said, it could be answered now, but it's, you know, when they're looking at 655 people just for this year getting professional development, and I think we spent $2,000 on it this year. It would look like it was $40,000.
Yeah, that's what the budget for this year is for that amount.
Well, just as a point of clarification, I think, because that is not, that $2,000 is not what was spent on all training. I think what you said was a significant, like, we're not outsourcing this anymore. We're doing this internally. So a significant amount of the expense that we're spending on staff training is actually probably in instruction and some of the other buckets. To the question that I think Board Member Anderson is asking is, is there a way? I get that we have a staff training budget line item separate from where we're actually doing it, because we're not hiring consultants or other people to do that anymore. Is there a way to estimate what we actually are spending on staff training within the budget? And I realize it might not be a separate line item, but that would help, I think, in the question that you're asking.
Each function has a professional learning line also.
Got it. So we would.
Within the function.
Within the function. So we could add up and just come up with a number. Okay, that's great.
All the things that stood out to me. Good job anticipating what QBE was gonna be, like, .06? How close you were? Really good. That's very helpful. I also, four million extra? Three and a half? Three and a half?
Four, which we mean overall.
So FY25, overall, that yellow part, right? So A, we have an illegally high fund balance.
I was saying illegally.
Okay, I apologize. Grab that from the record.
Yeah, please, strike that.
Per board policy, with 5% to 15%, and you're saying as a result of that budget, where...
Okay.
Okay. And then the actual versus the projected, to put that in the numbers, was four point, a difference of 4.4, or?
A difference of about 6 points.
Right, because initially, we budgeted to reduce it by 2.2, but instead, we added 4.4.
Okay. And so that's more than, almost two-plus years of a bond payment and some debt and some other stuff.
Absolution.
And then the, and then the other thing that stood out to me that never gets talked about, and I want to start screaming it more, was the instruction increase. If it was one slide up, that was great. You said that that was largely stuff, but was it so? An extra 3.4%? 3.4 million in the tax?
Main salary variance.
And that is almost exclusively, I mean, there's some other small things, but that's the majority of where our money goes. And that's what we added. It was compensation. Does that include health, the healthcare?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's cheating. Impressive increase year-over-year to add $3.4 million to the instruction line and add $6 million to it, and, you know, yep. That's it.
Can you clarify again that money that rolled over into the fund balance, was that largely because of the overage from the CAB?
That's part of it. It was between the, when you look at this slide, not this slide. When you look at this slide, you see with the revenue, we came in $4 million over in revenue, and then for expenditures, we spent $2 million less. So those two numbers, add that together, and that's all, and that went to the fund balance.
And so all of that went into the fund balance, the overage from the CAB just went directly into the fund balance?
Yes.
Yeah, so I realize that a couple of things are happening in the numbers that aren't really our fault, right? Like the $3.5 million of extra tax revenue that the CAB had withheld from us showing up all in one year, that's gonna go into the fund balance. We didn't anticipate that until really the end of the budget cycle. I'm more interested in the $2.5, $2.6 million less expense. I mean, you mentioned yourself that you're always gonna have vacant positions, you're always gonna have, you know, shifts like that that happen in the budget. I know we're in the process of putting in the ERP system, which will help us more tightly anticipate that, but we do have historical data that can help guide us when we choose, if we chose, to withhold budgeting. You can authorize a position and withhold the funding for that position presumptively on the expectation that there's going to be vacant positions for a period of time. And I think it's important that we start to do that, right? I mean, we have, I want to congratulate you. I mean, we've moved from years where our budget unfortunately whipsawed over, under, over, under, and it could whipsaw substantially over and substantially under that reserve fund. We've stopped that. We are now in a place where we have real control over what we're spending, and that's due to your work. So I don't fail to recognize that. We're now very conservative in the way that we do this, and consistently, we're putting more money than anticipated into the reserve, right? So the reserve is actually consistently growing. We're above the 15%, but 22% isn't our fault. Again, a lot of that came from the state. But we would still end up without, you know, three-ish million or so dollars. That is one mil, right? So I know I'm gonna harp on this a lot, but we, because we are budgeting much more tightly and we have chosen to budget conservatively, what we are basically doing... and we have chosen to budget conservatively, what we are basically doing is taxing a mil of additional dollars to ensure that. And so this is where I want us to get a little bit more tight and sophisticated and be willing to not budget for positions that we know are gonna be vacant. On just, I mean, not even that we know, but we might anticipate are going to be vacant, right?
We really, we really can anticipate what positions are gonna be vacant.
That's why it isn't a specific position. If I know that I run a department with X number of people, and there is a percent of that number that is consistently vacant every year, I can short that budget by that consistent amount. Even though I don't know which position is gonna be vacant over the course of the year, I will know that some of the positions will be vacant over the course of the year. And it means that I'm tighter to what I anticipate. It also means, for our purposes, every once in a while, we're going to come in where we overspend our budget rather than underspend it by a small percentage. That is what the reserve is for. Because otherwise, what we are doing is we are consistently taking an extra mil and putting it into our reserve. And so I do, I recognize that the ERP is gonna make a lot of this much easier. I do think that we can be even tighter.
I feel like I've heard this, I feel like I've heard this speech at least twice.
This is my third time saying this. My annual revisiting.
And I feel like I get, my question, how is, how is she, which position?
Consider, and I don't, I, I totally understand the logic. How is she supposed, and James is over here grumbling, like, how is she supposed to anticipate which positions to consider taking out of the budget and, and how much? Like, I mean
So the, the quick answer, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. The, the quick answer is you don't have to know which position is going to be vacant to reduce the budget for all of the positions by a certain percentage. Because during the course of the budget cycle, you can move money as needed. We even talked about this earlier today, for the positions that are filled from the positions that aren't filled. That can be active as the budget goes over the course of the year. And I'm not talking about ten percent or fifteen percent reductions. We're talking about one or two percent in the course of some of these, these positions, right? What I would suggest that we do is let's take it conservatively this year. I mean, we are consistently two percent or so over, under budget.
So we're down to two?
You're helping
And is that the, and is that the goal? The goal is two. That's the KPI, super percent.
So, so to answer your question, you don't know which ones. But if every year for the last ten years, we have half a million dollars that we have not been spending,
That's a good place to start.
Next year's budget should start with, there'll be about half a million. And if we're short, we're short, that's what we have a budget, that's it for. If we're high, at least we're not taxing people money, we don't technically need
So the position in and of itself doesn't matter, the total volume of money does. And you can move the position around from one place to the next to compensate.
Move the money around, not the position.
Maybe someone would have to move the money around for each position and every half benefit by the PRS.
Would have to go with it. I understand, thank you.
And now I, I do have a question, because maybe I'm misremembering. Like, in this particular budget review, I think we learned one of the biggest categories with extra money, for lack of a better word, was instruction. So if instruction is our biggest bucket, and I think I hear you saying, oh, you can look historically, and I'm gonna guess instruction's always going to have, because it's just the biggest bucket with the number of points. So it sounds like it's amount of money and specific category.
Yeah. I mean, I, I do want to be expressly clear, I am not suggesting reduction in positions. You can choose to not fund positions based on historical knowledge and then move the funds to the positions that are filled and defund the positions that aren't to get even tighter, right? We don't see any sort of the attrition that, 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 for example, the, the city sees, but, but consistently, you would fund you were personnel and actually authorized, because you knew you saw that much churn over the course of a year. And it's just a way to tighten that budget a little bit further, right?
At the end of the year, kind of do that as a cleanup.
Yeah.
But it would require moving, like, I might have to move money from instruction to support services, or I have to move money
Fully understand, yeah, full, fully understand that. And I know ERP will make that easier on you, right? And, and I actually sort of like the way James described it. It's not necessarily saying, okay, so we've got four million dollars, let's pull four million dollars out of the budget the first year, because that might be aggressive. But my guess is we can consistently say, let's take a mil, a third of a mil. It would basically take us to the twenty, uh, twenty even mileage rate as opposed to twenty point three, and we would still have a balanced budget. And it would almost cover the entirety of the bond.
Yes, that's true.
Say that.
It was dangerous, dangerous.
Just what he's talking about is that, that's what I'm, I'm saying, yeah. It's, you sweep the corners, is what I'm suggesting.
Mm-hmm. So, Board members, I remember when we were setting the KPI for the strategic plan, and I suggested two percent variance for revenues and expenditures. With the feedback provided by the board, it was changed to just expenditures, as we cannot control revenue.
Yeah.
And I want to say thank you for that, because this unexpected revenue from the cab county shifted our fiscal year twenty-five budget tremendously. Additionally, I expect to select that ERP this year. We published the ERP last year, but those who responded could not meet our criteria. Therefore, we have to go back out again with another round of solicitation.
Thank you, Dr. Broom, for the FY twenty-five budget review. I understand this is unaudited, and I look forward to the, and we look forward to the auditor providing his opinion in January. Board will now move on to consent agenda items, which include monthly items such as financial, nutrition, and personnel reports. The first item includes a report. There will be a motion to accept the consent agenda in totality. Dr. Whitaker, do we have a monthly financial report?
Yes, Chair Solsen, Dr. Nolan Rowne Needham Broom, she's financial officer, will present the monthly financial report.
Good evening, Board Chair and everyone. Fiscal year twenty-seven, oh, that's wrong. The September twenty-twenty-five financial reports and definition of function codes are located in Assembly Agenda. The Finance Department operates based on the district's four strategic accelerators with a specific focus on accelerator four, organizational effectiveness and excellence through financial transparency. For the general fund, as of September, the district collected thirty-one percent or approximately four point four million dollars of the budgeted revenue year-to-date, which is in line with the percentage that was collected last year this time. Expenditures are normal for this time of the year. The district has expended eighteen percent of the overall budget, or approximately nine million dollars, year-to-date. Last year this time, the district had expended twenty-one percent of the overall budget. The majority of September expenditures are the salaries and benefits of ten-month employees who knew, who knew fiscal year twenty-five salary started in September. For the month of September, there was a deficit of approximately five million dollars, which means the district's expenditures for the month were five million dollars more than the monthly revenue. Last year at this time, the deficit was four million dollars. The approximately five million dollars has been deducted from the fund balance, which is normal for this time of the year. Overall, year-to-date, there is a surplus of approximately thirteen million dollars due to the property tax collection posted in July. Last year this time, there was a surplus of twelve million dollars. The surplus of revenue is normal at this time of the year in accounts for the healthy fund balance of approximately thirty-seven million dollars, which includes the unaudited beginning fund balance of approximately twenty-four million dollars. Please note that the fund balance will continue to decrease as expenditures increase. September revenue for capital fund consists of approximately five hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars from slot six proceeds and earners' own investments. Expenditures are significantly lower than last year, and the nine hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, nine hundred thirty thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollar deficit was deducted from the fund balance. The district collected seventeen percent of budgeted revenue and expended twenty-six percent of budgeted expenditures. Special revenue fund consists mainly of federal, local, and state grants not budgeted in general fund. In September, we were closing out fiscal year twenty-five grants receiving for fiscal year twenty-six. The district collected ten percent of the budgeted revenue and expended eighteen percent of the budgeted expenditures. Reimburseable grants require the district to spend the funds prior to receiving reimbursement. School nutrition revenue and expenditures are trending within the same range as previous years. For the month of September, twenty-one percent of the budgeted revenue was received and seventeen percent of the budgeted expenditures were spent. School nutrition operated at a deficit of twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-seven, which has been deducted from the fund balance. As of September, the school nutrition fund balance was approximately one point four million dollars. This time last year, the fund balance was one point eight million dollars. I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification as needed.
Thank you, Dr. Broom. Any questions or comments from the board? No, this item is on to consent. Dr. Whitaker, do we have another presentation?
It's actually going to be yes, and I will do it.
Okay.
It will be quick. So, last, yes, so it is regarding the legislative priorities. And so the legislative priorities that were drafted or proposed in October of last year have, are on the consent agenda, next slide. The proposed, all of our legislative priorities are part of all parts of strategic plan, but they really do focus on the organizational effectiveness and excellence. Strategic accelerator, our first priority remains the same as presented in October's session, and we have added a specific priority to continue to allow the operation of enforcement of school zone speed cameras. So that is added from last year, but is in this one. Moving, next slide. The mental health priorities still remain the same. There has been no changes. Next slide. The funding, funding legislative priority remains the same from the work session, no changes. And this is a continuation of that funding priority, no changes. But we did want to make sure that you knew, and this is not, yeah, and this is not the latest, because it's missing her bullet.
The bullet, including the, okay.
The bullet that is missing is a red bullet that says that there is a priority to ensure that we are going to advocate to have a student member of the board at the legis, under the gold zone, so that will be part of the legislative priorities for this year. That is the one bullet that was added to what was in the work session agenda and needs to, sure, please read it.
The only bullet that changed is the one for amplify student voice.
Mm-hmm.
And it now says urge local school districts to amplify student voice by adding a student representative to education.
Yeah. So that is a bullet that is missing from this slide, but that is a part of the legislative priority.
And, and, oh, I don't want to and just to be transparent with the public, the situation as it stands, because we are a charter district and have particular exemptions that we can take with the state, we are able to put a student board representative on our board, but it's, our, my understanding is, public school systems in Georgia that are not charter systems don't have that flexibility, and so we are advocating at the State House to include the Georgia Dome, I'm sorry, to include other schools. Okay, yes, that's a good way of saying it.
Yes, and the right one is on assembly. It just was not projected.
Got it.
All right. Yes, so Chair Solsen, may I read, um, you want to move it to consent?
All right, thank you. Any, thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Any comments or questions from the board?
Hey, I want to just, I really appreciated Senator Parent speaking up about the way QBE, and we have stuff, and how important the governor, because in the state of Georgia, governor sets the budget, just basically their office just gets, like, this is how much money we think we're gonna make, and then they and that election, and probably more important for educational funding and priorities and being able to do anything than, than
Than almost anything.
Than any other human being, person, or office that exists. You know, the governor, and, and we have a massive budget in the state. Mary Margaret Oliver said she thinks it's seventeen billion dollars. Then all it would take is a different governor or different, different group to say, like, we do, do have this money. We do care about QBE. We do care about these things, and we would have a lot more. Because the problem is we have the priorities. They seem very non-controversial, right? Like, the school government, you know, more mental health. But until they fix that budget, and you, as, as a citizen who we vote for, it's incredibly important.
Yes, she also described, they only get so many bites at the apple. You know, they can only go back so many times. So it's not out of lack of desire. It's just a finite amount of dollars. Any other questions or comments? All right, this item is on to consent.
All right, Chair Solsen, may I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I recommend that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve consent agenda items one through six.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through six?
The move.
Board Member Us makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Board Member Anderson, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Please introduce the next item.
Chair Solsen, I'm a little bit carlo, Mrs. Amanda Lynn, chief of staff, to discuss three policies for first read.
Good evening, once again, Board Chair Dr. Solsen, Vice Chair of the City Members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. Tonight, we have three policies on the agenda for action. These policies are FD, facilities long-range planning, FDB, long-range needs determination, and JCCAF, use of electronic devices by students. First is policy FD, facilities long-range planning. This policy was presented last month for first read and has been available for public comment through assembly. No public comment was received and no changes were made to the version presented last month. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
It's the recommendation, or it is recommended that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve policy FD, facilities long-range planning for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation of policy FD, facilities long-range planning for second read action?
The move.
Board Member Herndon makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Jonathan Davis seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Next is policy FDB, long-range needs determination. This policy was presented last month for first read and has been available for public comment through assembly. We did receive one public comment requesting the inclusion of timelines specifically for community input and informing families of potential school closure. Based on the board's initial discussion and pre-work, specific timelines were discussed but determined not to be included. Importantly, state law provides for community input opportunities related to school closures. Therefore, no changes were made to the version presented last month. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
It is recommended that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve policy FDB, long-range needs determination for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation of policy FDB, long-range needs determination for second read action?
The move.
Board Member Us makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Herndon seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Finally, is policy JCCAF, use of electronic devices by students. This policy was presented last month for first read and has been available for public comment through assembly. We received four public comments via assembly, all of which were comments in support of the policy. Respondents indicated comfort with students not having access to their devices during the school day, but still desired students to have access before and after school, especially for safety purposes in tracking students during arrival and dismissal. One respondent emphasized the importance of the policy restricting access throughout the day and emphasized that students should not be able to easily sneak devices during the school day. We appreciate this affirming feedback. No changes were made to the version of the policy presented last month. Next steps will be to work with schools on the implementation plan for when the policy goes into effect next school year. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
It is recommended that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve policy JCCAF for students for
To approve the recommendation of policy JCCAF, use of electronic devices by students for second read action? Board Member Anderson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Board Member Us seconds the motion. Is there any discussion?
Just very, very quickly, the Just very, very quickly, the timeline is, for public to understand, the timeline is the next school year, and that is, this was driven by state law and not.
Correct. State law required to put a bell-to-bell prohibition on K through eight, um, use of electronic devices during the school day. It has to be adopted by January first of twenty-twenty-six. So we are now, if the vote goes through, we'll be in compliance with that and it has to go into effect, um, for the July first. So really for us, next school year, so that will be noted on the policy.
Okay, thank you. So even though we're passing this, there's no intent to implement it until.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, get that part. Moving on to future dates. Okay, the K to two utilization study committees, um, will launch on November thirteenth at six-thirty, um, at Beacon Hill Middle School. So everybody should go to Beacon Hill Middle School. Uh, the board will host a retreat on November eighteenth, um, from twelve-thirty PM to four PM at the Decatur Conference Center. Topics slated for discussion are return on investment, compensation first look, school allotment guidelines, which is a continuation from October's work session, budget parameters and priorities, continuation from today's work session, balance scorecard, and updated from the All-Indicator Strategic Plan. The next board meeting will be held on December ninth, twenty-twenty-five at the Wilson Center. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
The special call meeting that was sensitively set.
Still sensitive. It's not, we have to wait.
And then, if I may, I had a quick question about the board retreat. I felt like we talked as a group here that we would be providing a perspective on what we wanted as output from those groups. And so that'll knock something else off that agenda. Or you're just going to, you're going to circle a square?
Figure it out.
You'll figure.
I, I look at the, the, the time allotment. It's, I need to talk to you guys to think about. So you guys can give me how much time you need for that, and then we're, we'll shave. So we're at it.
Any other? And just for clarification, um, on Thursday, everybody goes to Beacon Hill, but there, the committees may not launch. They just will be meeting to discuss how their committees will go. I just, I feel like the word launch may be a little confusing. Yeah, okay, all right. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at eight oh four PM.